Yeah, my wife, she talked about it.
I mean, but I always was with her. I just could pay back, didn't I?
Even I remember.
Is it there?
It hasn't been there for years, but they always.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us today to our Prescott City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, October the 7th, 2014. This is a workshop. So with that said, any introductions, yeah?
Not today, Mayor.
Okay. That's it?
Not today, unless we want to talk to Allison and get a legislative update for about a while.
Yeah, we won't have time for that today. Today, we're honored to have Elder Hunsecker and Elder Earl of the LDF Church. They'll do the invocation. Gentlemen, would you like to come forward?
Our most kind and gracious eternal heavenly Father, we are grateful for the state Thou has given us. We're thankful for the blessings that we enjoy and for this free country that we live in. Today, we ask a blessing upon all those in this city that we will be able to have a good remainder of our day. Please bless all those in this meeting that we can all feel the Spirit and have a good discussion. We're grateful, heavenly Father, for all Thou has given us and for our families and for the rights that we have to worship how we may. We ask a blessing upon this country and for all those that may be sick or sad or afflicted at this time, that they can recover from whatever unhappiness that they may be going through right now. We ask a blessing upon all of our brothers and sisters, and please bless our family members too. Bless all those that stand in need of Thy comfort. And we are very grateful for Thy Son, Jesus Christ, and for all that Thou has blessed us with, with Him. Please help us to become the people that we want to and work on work on living the lives that we seek to, to become. And help us to give service to those in need. Heavenly Father, we love Thee very much, and we're grateful for all Thy blessings again. And we pray for these things in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Chris?
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the presentations, I ask Mark to this Friday, the State of Arizona, the Model City Tax Code Committee that establishes some of the tax code for the municipalities. We have a meeting in Prescott, or in Phoenix on Friday. And I ask Mark if he would make the council aware of what we were going to be doing there, because I'm not 100% sure of what we are going to be doing. So, Mark, would you take advantage of that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And the mayor sets on the Model City Tax Code Commission, which is the governing body that kind of encompasses the Model City Tax Code. And all things that go into or changes to the code go through the commission for consistency and as part of a public hearing process. As the mayor mentioned, he has a meeting this Friday. There's two items on the agenda mainly related to some legislation that has happened over the last few years to bring that into the Model City Tax Code. One of them is in relation to the exempt status of electricity for manufacturers of goods. Again, we all remember when this was in the legislature that it was left to a city's discretion whether they wanted to tax add or provide the tax break, which the state wanted to give. So the item the commission will be hearing is just that option, bringing that option into the tax code. Doesn't mean that the City of Prescott will not be receiving tax on that, but it is just an option in the code to be consistent with the legislation. The second item also relates to some legislation, 2111, which a few of you might recall, which was the state taking over the collection of local taxes. There are several things that we need to clean up in the code to make that happen. The one that the mayor's commission will be looking at this Friday is related to the licensing and some of the approval processes, which were outlined in the existing Model City Tax Code, are not going to be able to be encompassed in the Model City Tax Code any longer. We can't have planning and zoning sign off on whether DOR issues a tax report for a particular business. So all that wording has to be changed and amended to be compliant. Now, once the commission, the process that it goes through is the commission will study these, change the Model City Tax Code, and then those changes will eventually come back to the City of Council to consider bringing into our version of the Model City Tax Code. They will come in, but the decision we'll make at that time is the exemption of electricity on manufacturing and things like that. So that'll be coming in a few months back to the council, but right now it's at the mayor's committee. With that, I can go into more depth, but that's the basis of what the commission will be looking at this Friday.
And as I understand it, we should support these changes at the state level.
Yeah, and again, it's to come into compliance with what the legislature has passed. So the code needs to be changed as directed by the legislature. So it is just a bit of a formality for these things. Other things that come to the commission are not quite so boilerplate as these are.
Okay. Appreciate it, Mark. Thank you. Okay.
Your Honor, may do roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Proton Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Kuknio.
Here.
Councilman Lazo.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Presentations, Prescott Chamber of Commerce, introduction of new businesses. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you all. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the membership director at the Prescott Chamber. We have a few things going on at the chamber. We are now accepting nominations for the Healthy Prescott Business Awards. The Healthy Business Awards are a way to recognize outstanding businesses in our area. Now, anyone can nominate a business. Simply tell us why X company should be selected in under 200 words. You can pick up an application at our downtown office at 117 West Goodwin or visit Prescott.org. The award winners will be announced at our annual meeting in January. Next Thursday at 5:00 PM, everyone is invited to attend our next mixer, and that's co-hosted by the old Firehouse Plaza and Firehouse Kitchen. The Prescott Chamber membership continues to grow. Here's a list of our new members. Adventure Travel and Golf Carts, Amazing Foot Spa, Amazing Grace Bed and Breakfast, Armadillo Wax Works of Prescott, Bennett Glass and Mirror, Big Picture Video Productions, Black Arrow Jewelry and Art, Canyon River Community Hospice, Coffee News of Prescott, Elks Opera House Guild, Eagle Management and Events, Granite Kitchen Concepts, Holdsworth Law Firm, Mad Shirts Full Service Printing, Nectar, A Modern Herbal Apothecary, The Squali's Place, A Moreno Corner Bistro, Prescott Medical Imaging, Prest Amos Small Business Lending, Sanders Plastering Systems, Souldy Back Alley Bistro, and finally, Tractor Supply Company. Thank you.
Thank you. You had a good month.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Okay. Sister City Program presentation, Bob Greniger and Margot Christiansen. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff and citizens in the audience. It's been a while since Sister Cities had been before the council, and we thought it appropriate to bring you up to date on some of our activities and some of the areas we focus on now beyond just being a social organization. I think sometimes we misinterpret what Sister Cities is all about, but it's much more than a social gathering. We do an awful lot around tourism, travel, humanitarian work, charity work, and in some cases, economic development opportunities. So, as you can see by the slide, the Sister City Association of Prescott, which is the umbrella organization of the city, was created by a resolution of the city council in 1972, celebrating our 42nd year. Forty-two years of friendship. This is the project update. Go ahead. The idea of the Sister City was created by Mayor Taylor Hicks at that time to foster friendship with the Mexican Sister City of similar size, economy, educational opportunities, and citizen interest. As I mentioned, it's much more than a social organization. The entire Sister City program was created by President Dwight Eisenhower back in 1956, reaching out to, rather than government to government, rather to community to community and individual to individual. Our committee, the first one, the Prescott Caborca Committee, focused on charitable humanitarian, educational, and cultural activities. A sampling of some of the activities for the Prescott Caborca Group would include our ongoing financial, material, logistic support for Casa Hogar, the official orphanage in the city of Caborca. They range in population anywhere from eight kids to today they have 32 kids. Most of them have been dropped off in Caborca with parents who fled across the border in the United States or they were brought there by the city through abuse and maltreatment. Regardless, these kids are well taken care of, and it's a privilege for us to be affiliated with the orphanage, working with them, doing things from rewiring their entire operation, applying, rather, supplying appliances, furniture, toys, and so forth. I don't have any pictures of the operation, because that's a rule down there, no pictures of the kids or the operation. Fortunately, partially through the mayor's effort and through Lifeline Ambulance, we have secured a number of different ambulances, which have been taken down to Caborca. One of them is now in place on the road between Sonoyota and Rocky Point. One is the official, one of the official ambulances for Caborca. I have another one in my driveway right now that's going down in two weeks that will be placed down on the Beach Community of Desambocay. So that's something that's been ongoing. Also, we do annual reciprocal visits to Caborca. They come up here in July, and we're heading down there in two weeks. There's the ambulance back up. Hit the ambulance, the ambulance as it sits at Lifeline before it's taken down to Caborca and changed with their logo and their information. Well, we're going to do that again. This is part of the interface between the communities. This is when they were up here in July of last year, and this is the farewell breakfast that we have out on 89 Hay at the church on the hill every year. In the past, we've had Caborkan dancers, singers, and young mariachi bands that have performed here. We've had the choir and orchestras from Yavapai College go down to Caborca. We were helped, we were helping very much in the renovation of Caborca's old temple. It's an 18th century mission with a Father Quino legacy. We were there for the rededication and re-consecration of it on May 8th, 2009, on the 200th anniversary of the church. And the consecration mass was the exactly same one that they did in 200 years earlier. So it was quite a thing. Also, we're involved in Bikes for Books for the students down there. We collect bikes, refurbish them, and take them down there, and they auction them off to raise money for their library. We have a number of fundraisers here in town that we do. Here are two of them. There's the Bicycle for Books being unloaded in Caborca. And if any of you have been on the square for the June Festival, the Labor Day Festival, and the upcoming October Fall Fest, you'll see our pickle booth. We sell pickles along with water and soft drinks. And this brings in anywhere from, depending upon the event, several hundred dollars to a couple of thousand dollars for us. And then we do other auctions and silent auctions and so forth. We remain strong here in Prescott after 42 years. And the players may have changed, but we're still a strong, active organization with lots of interest. We invite each of you, mayor, council members, and Prescott area residents to join us on one of our unique and fun excursions down to Caborca. I was just talking with the relatively new police chief, and he's done some Sister City work in O'Gallas in the past and has asked if we could arrange something for him in Caborca. And I assure you, we will do that. And now, standing to my right is Margot Christiansen, the chair of the Prescott-Zite Sister City Committee. Margot?
Okay, so the Prescott-Zite Sister City Committee has been in place for about two years now. We started the project about three years ago. And it was ratified by the Prescott City Council in March of 2013. And then it took Zite City Council about a year to follow suit. And they followed suit in March of 2014. They've got, I think, 35 council members over there, so it takes them a really long time to get anything done. So that took a whole another year. I went to Zite's on May 27th, 2014, to sign off on all the final documents. So what we've been doing, the student exchange program is really a core part of the project. We've had two exchanges so far between Prescott and Zites. And the next exchange is being worked on right now. The group is being formed from Zites to Prescott approximately March 15th through the 31st. And they have, from what I'm told, they have at least 10 students, and it looks like they're working on a waiting list right now. If we can find more host families for them, then they can send more. And then Prescott to Zites will be the first two weeks of June of 2015. Mayor Volk Markunza was here in town about three weeks ago, and he was here for two days with his friends and family members. There was eight in their group, and we had a great time touring them all around. And then Oktoberfest took place, of course, two weeks ago. We kind of got a little ringed out. I don't think we raised as much money as we would like. I'm still waiting on final figures, but hopefully we raised, you know, maybe another thousand or two to help out with the exchange program. Tourism development and visitors, we have had a slew of visitors this year coming from Zites. Prescott's on the map, and anytime they know that they're making a trip to the Southwest, they're starting to come and visit us on a really very regular basis. And we've just had some amazing friendships spur because of this. Madeline Hooka was here in August. She's the daughter of Andreas Hooka, who is a very well-known businessperson over there, and he's also been a great financial supporter of the program. And then, of course, Mayor Kunza was here. We had a reception for him at Spring Hill Suites, took him to the museums and so forth. And then one of my business appointments, when I was there in May, I had numerous tour operator appointments. One of them was with this gal, Corinna. And she was already planning her trip to the Southwest this September. And her overnight in Arizona was scheduled to be in Kingman. So I kind of twisted her arm, and I said, "Oh, no, don't go to Kingman. Come to Prescott for a couple of days and let me show you around." So that was great. I took her around for a two-day solid while she was here, and we'll definitely be on her itinerary for future group visits. And then last night, I was very happy to welcome George Ewald, who's president of the Arizona Club in Dresden. I met him. He was one of my appointments also when I was there last May. And so he's president of the Arizona Club. They have about 75 to 80 members in Dresden. They have a whole book like this, a little booklet, all about all of their trips and travels that their club members make through Arizona. And so we had a great time touring them around. Whoops, excuse me. Went to the palace last night, saw Mr. Arnold there. And then today, we went to Smoke Eye Museum and a couple other stops today. And then one of the biggest projects that we have worked on just the past few weeks was a collaboration between the City of Prescott Tourism Department and the Prescott-Zite Sister City Association and the City of Zites. Would you mind passing this out? The first-ever foreign language brochure that Prescott has ever had, a visitor brochure, is now in German. So this is a really great collaboration, and it just took a month to do this, so pretty exciting. Projects and programs already being developed through 2016, as you see here. The student exchange program dates are pretty firm all the way through 2016. We've got lots of cultural and business groups now traveling back and forth. The German-language brochure is done, and we're going to be continuing to do outreach to the Arizona Club to coordinate more group travel to Prescott. And I'll pass it back to Bob.
We also have a third Sister City, but it's pretty much inactive at the moment, with the exception of the student visits to Suchitoto in El Salvador. Each year for the last three years, the North Point Learning Academy, North Point Expeditionary Learning Academy has sent upwards of 30 students over the years and a number of chaperones down to Suchitoto, where they learn about the country, they do some educational and service projects. And we're hoping, with the help of Councilman Wilcox, to re-energize the Suchitoto Committee and see if we can get it back on its feet and active again in the city. And the future, how many Sister Cities can the Prescott area support? That's really up to the area. We're right now, in the very early stages, looking at Vergiata, Italy, as a possible new Sister City. It may have some economic opportunities for us that we're going to research and make some initial contacts. But a city can have as many Sister Cities as they can support, and it's really up to the community at large to support the Sister City programs. And as you've seen, the Caborca program, the Zites program have enthusiastic support. We're going to try and rekindle the flame for the Suchitoto group, and who knows about Italy? It may be an entirely different animal that we work with, more based on economic development and economic ties than anything else. But we're active, and we're moving forward, and this city can be very proud of its Sister City program. Thank you.
Chris, you want to comment on your maiden voyage?
Yeah, you betcha. You know, Mayor, I want to thank Bob and Margot for coming out and letting us know. And, you know, Sister Cities is more than just fun times. And I've gotten to go to both Caborca and Zites. And when you go down to Caborca and you're at that orphanage, I didn't want to leave. I was having such a good time there, and you just want to grab a couple of those little kids and throw them in your suitcase and bring them home, you know. It really touches you, and you want to help them out there, because there is such a need down there. On Zites, I keep patting myself on the back for bringing Margot on board. She has just been an engine, working hard on this project, and you've done so much, and you continue to do so much. I think Zites is really an example of how good a Sister City program can get, you know. And you see these flyers that'll be all over Germany, and the Germans are nuts about it. You know, I think we got Germans coming here just about every weekend now, thanks to Margot, because she keeps wanting me to meet them out there for lunch and stuff. So there's a ton of them coming in, and the kids, when they do the student exchange, you know, I got to see them. They're all really good kids. They had a great time when they were here. And what really showed you that the program's working is they were here for three weeks, right? It was three weeks' time. I was there when they were getting on the buses to leave, and both sides of the kids were just crying. They had already made such a big bond that they didn't want to leave each other, and they just had such a good time. So Sister Cities is doing great, and Bob just got the honor, you're on the national board now for Sister Cities International. So we have great representation here in Prescott, and I just hope it continues on. And thank you guys for all the hard work and time. You guys have both put in your time and a lot of your own money to make this program work, and that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Margot. Thanks, Bob. Okay, next we have Tommy Meredith, Gary, and Gary Edelbrock, and they're going to talk to us about courthouse lighting.
Mayor?
Council?
Good afternoon, Yuri.
Clark, is it possible to put this on the overhead?
Good afternoon, Tommy.
Contrary to popular belief, Jersey lilies did not burn down the other night. As a matter of fact, they're open and well. For those of you who have been here before, and I know that Greg was not here last year, Jean, this is our seventh Christmas season, and, well, it's actually our seventh presentation and our sixth Christmas, which will be coming up soon. And when we started this little group called the Friends of Jersey Lily, there was approximately 32 trees lit on the courthouse plaza. Now, through the efforts of Prescott Downtown Partnership, the Chamber, and our own contribution group, it's now, there's over 100 lit. And there's a little surprise, which I'll give you a little tip on. If you look on the north side, there'll be a different star displayed this year. So there is a change from last year. We have a committee of eight people, Gillian Haley, and by virtue of her being married, Matt's now joined our little group. We have Jet and Jesse Turner, Tommy and his wife. We have a graphic artist who prepared that flyer. And you can see that we are going to have a kickoff fundraiser on Thursday, November 6th, at 5:00 PM. There'll be food, and Tommy always has entertainment up there on Thursdays, so there'll be a little bit. But during the auction and the time we're up there, of course, he won't be performing. And we have sponsored bulbs, and they are in denominations all the way from $5 to $500. So they are attached to the back bar of the Jersey Lily. And when people come in, they see them, they ask. They're really quite generous. We've had people from out of state who've never been in Prescott. One gentleman came here and gave us $300. He gave us $100 one night. He came back the next night and gave us $100, and he gave us another $100, because he just thought that was a really nice thing to do. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Meredith, because for those who like Mr. Lamerson and Mr. Blair, who have heard me yak for seven times, we won't overdo it, but Tommy's going to tell you a little bit about it. And one of our partners, who's joined us twice in the last three years, are the Nebickers, Bill and his wife, Mary. So, Tommy?
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for having us, letting us come and talk to you today. Gary pretty much covered the details, and I'm sure a lot of it goes in one ear and out the other. But I just want to let you know that the city would go to any extent for training exercise here yesterday. So we need to calm them down a little bit on the fire and building code inspectors. But in all seriousness, not too long ago, I was trying to figure out why we got into this deal of raising money for the lighting. And I couldn't come up with a real good reason, except that I just like Christmas. And my family's always been involved in it, Santa Claus right on up. And I think that probably my mother was the basis for that. She decorated everything, and my wife of 53 years picked up on it. And if you've been to my house and seen my wife's decorations, you probably understand where I'm coming from. But it's a great time of year, and I just think that the lighting in itself, the whole program of the courthouse lighting, is probably seen and appreciated by more people of any event in all of Prescott year-round. Because last, it was the 6th of December, right on through Martin Luther King Day, and there's no limit to the amount of people, young and old, that come by and see those trees and that lighting. And it's, you know, it's something that I think, one of the reasons we probably are the Arizona Christmas City. Gary mentioned briefly the auction, and we're talking about our kickoff party, November 6th right now. And we do, I do a little auction, even if my voice sounds like it does. I'm getting more, I can hardly auctioneer anymore. But we are collecting donations of any kind for live and silent auctions. And that, as well as donations the night of the kickoff party, it gives us a running start. We've collected 17,000 approximately the last two years. And if we can leave the kickoff party with a nice bankroll, it gives us a good start. And like Gary says, from then on, we're dependent upon... Friends of Jersey Lily is, came out of nowhere, as far as the way to merchandise this thing. And it's important to know, Dave Maras here over at the Chamber, who's a big help. And a lot of people like to, we recommend even the checks can be made to the Chamber because they have to go through that 501(c)(3) program and some people want to write it off. Can make it out to them, but we would like to ask everybody down on the bottom of your check to put Friends of Jersey Lily, so Dave's bookkeeper can give us the credit for collecting that portion of the money. So, it's, the other thing I want to get into is Bill Nebicker and Mary. As you can see, their horse, Ready, Willing and Able, is up there, valued at forty-five-hundred. They donated two years ago to one, which our supervisor Craig Brown drew. They accused me of having a stuffed ballot box, but it was legitimate. Marlon, he did the drawing, so we knew it was legitimate. Right? But anyway, I can't say too much about them. They've really been active in the community in this respect. And you all know what these things go for and what they're involved with, but we'll be having that drawing in December, at the same night of the courthouse lighting program. And usually, the mayor's up there drawing tickets and Ken Bennett, after he finishes with the lighting ceremony, he walks across the street and draws our, gives a presentation for the drawing. Martin Sullivan's on our committee. He just came up with the, our flyer, which we've never had, a big eleven by seventeen. And he's new in town and quite a professional and this is the first one he's done and we'll have a lot more, of course. But anyway, you know, that's the program you guys have all heard, I'm sure, several times. Greg's over there smiling at me like, get off this thing, you know. But one thing I will say, any kind of donations would be very well received, as far as whether it's money or product or whatever it might be. But it gives us that running start for our kickoff party. So, come on down, see us and thank you very much for letting us be here.
Tommy, what's, last year you raised how much?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand. And what's your goal this year?
Over seventeen thousand.
Over seventeen thousand.
Yeah, the last two years, we've raised about seventeen thousand each year. But when you think about it, we started out seven years ago with thirteen hundred. Coming out of a little business like that, it's, I'm pretty proud of that and it's rewarding. It really is. It's a lot of work. It started to be a lot of work, but...
Yeah. If somebody wants to contribute and they come up, do they have to buy something before they can contribute or?
Well, they contribute and they can go like twenty-five dollars. Nice question. But the one, twenty-five dollars will get you one raffle ticket that goes towards the bronze. Fifty dollars gets you five, a hundred dollars and ten, so on and so forth. So, it's a combination. It's kind of complicated. We want you to donate, get your name on the light bulbs on the back bar, but it also entitles you to your chances for winning the raffle. So, the more money you spend, the more chances you get.
You'll explain to them what they're doing?
Well, most likely.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Yuri.
We do thank you and appreciate you letting us come. Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, we'll move into our discussion items. We have a presentation on the operations management and transition of the Antelope Hills Golf Course. Mr. Bane?
Thank you, Mayor, City Counsel, for allowing us to present today on the Antelope Hills Transition of Business Operations. I'll start off with some financial information, a roll-up of fiscal year fourteen and follow it up with a snapshot of the months of July and August comparatively from fiscal year thirteen to fourteen. And then Billy Casper Golf will take over from there and talk more about programs, marketing, other transition items like that. Just a little background, on the June twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen council workshop, direction was given to implement a series of measures to improve the Antelope Hills financial performance. One was to transition the golf course and its ancillary operations from a separate department into a division of the renamed Recreation Services Department and make that effective October first of two thousand thirteen, to retain separate accounting in the golf course fund to assure clarity and accountability for that, to pursue a public-private partnership through an RFP process with the maintenance of the golf course continuing as a city function and the business operation contracted out. We were to formally reflect those changes in the fiscal year fifteen budget, which we did. On April eighth, two thousand fourteen, council unanimously approved a five-year agreement with Billy Casper Golf. And then effective May first of this year, Billy Casper Golf assumed business operations of the facilities and began the transition. A little bit about Billy Casper Golf's contract, we've gone over this before, but their operating budget is about one point two million dollars. Their management fee is eighty-four thousand dollars annually, that includes travel. Billy Casper Golf, as part of this contract, has a net income guarantee to the city of Prescott for one point three million dollars, which is equal to the maintenance, yearly maintenance costs of the golf course. If they do not meet that, they have a couple of different ways to cure that. They can cure that through deferring management fees or just paying the aggregate difference. The golf course will continue, or golf carts will continue to be included as an operating budget item. The prior remaining debt service was paid early and Billy Casper Golf will be responsible for the lease of the future new golf courts, carts as necessary, which we're thinking they've got two or three more years on them. This contract allows the city to terminate for any reason after two years with one hundred and twenty days notice and no penalty. Billy Casper Golf will have the flexibility to adjust the non-resident golf rates as necessary. Also, Billy Casper Golf has some incentives based on revenue performance. They have ten percent of the golf revenues in excess of one point seven million dollars. Golf revenues consist of the green fees, range income, cart fees and annual pass income. Also, if they get up to the level of one point nine million dollars, that increases to fifteen percent. And then, on the food and beverage side, they have ten percent of the gross profit in excess of five hundred thousand dollars and fifteen percent of the gross profit margin in merchandise sales in excess of forty thousand dollars. A fiscal year ending, roll-up here on the course operations. The course operation revenues were up one hundred thousand dollars over fiscal year thirteen. Over in the right-hand column, my clicker's working. So, we were up over a hundred thousand dollars in revenues as opposed to fiscal year thirteen. And expenses were up eighty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, mainly due to employee severance costs that were sixty-four thousand dollars. So, that's a little misleading. So, the net result on the golf course operations was sixteen thousand dollars of improved performance over the previous fiscal year. On the restaurant, food and beverage side, which we, for the purposes of this presentation, we compiled into just total restaurant revenues, we were down fifteen thousand dollars over the previous fiscal year. And that's primarily because in January, we shut the kitchen down for three weeks to do a total remodel of the kitchen, which was long overdue. At the same time, we retained some of the employees that worked in the kitchen to help with some of that work. So, we lost a little bit of revenue there. The expenses were up twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. A lot of that's based, again, on that retaining the employees to help with the kitchen upgrade. The net result, the net result when you subtract the one-time severance cost was a forty-one thousand dollar improvement over fiscal year thirteen. Now, on the financial snapshot, comparing the two months of July and August of two thousand thirteen versus the two months of July and August in two thousand fourteen, the revenues are up sixty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So, a pretty good jump in that two-month period, which is two of the busier months out of the golf course. And the expenses were up forty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Approximately twenty thousand dollars of that increase on the expense side is due to a one-time capital expense for point-of-sale system upgrade that made the point-of-sales throughout the whole complex compatible, as well as we did some audiovisual upgrades at the Centennial Center to help better facilitate some business meetings there that needed Okay, on the restaurant side, the revenues were up fourteen thousand dollars over the previous fiscal year, where expenses were down fifteen thousand dollars. So, the net improvement on that was thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The total improvement over the first two months of fiscal year fifteen before maintenance, debt service and internal charges is forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. That, excuse me, that number right there. So, really, for the first two months of the fiscal year, and again, two of the busier months of the year, a forty-nine thousand dollar increase in performance, I think, has got us off to a pretty good start. Golf business is a lot about the winter, it's a lot about the weather, but I'm happy with the start that we've got here. And with that, I would answer any questions you have, or if you'd like to wait till Billy Casper's done with their part, we can answer those at that time, too.
I can do mine at the end, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
All I have to do is click, right? Perfect. I can figure that out. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I am Chris Jones with Billy Casper Golf and this is John Farrell, General Manager of Antelope Hills. Our goal when we came here back in May was to minimize the risk to the city, providing minimum thresholds on profitability. Few of the things that we bring to the table, we have an in-house PR firm, Buffalo Communications, resources and a track record of revenue growth. We have a dedicated West Coast regional team, operations, which is me. We have a national director of food and beverage and national partnerships, who handles the merchandising. Regional marketing director, based out of Southern California, accounting and corporate support, based back in Vienna. Our vision for you is to deliver a great guest experience, happy constituents. To build revenues is really the main thing. Little bit about the transition with the employees. I conducted employee interviews with the entire staff, got to know the ins and the outs of the facility before we came in. It was very helpful. We had staff meetings with the entire staff, going over everything from our benefits package, about the company, training, customer service, and then we provided a punch list to the city. The result of that, a hundred percent of the employees were retained. In addition to that, we brought in John Farrell as our general manager. John has been with the company for several years, over seventeen years of experience. And he's a little happier than he is in that picture. That is a mugshot, by the way. Couple of our proprietary programs, ACE, the Customer Experience, very important to us. Customer service is the key in our business. BCGU is our online training program, where you can learn anything from how to use Excel to work on your soft skills and develop a better, become a better manager. How we get there is increase the loyalty of the existing golfers. July and August alone, we're up three thousand rounds over prior year. So, very excited about that. We took the existing card program from a hundred and sixty-two members to seven hundred and twenty-six currently. Annual growth in golf, food and beverage for Antelope Hills is our main focus. Some of the new loyalty programs, the PDP card, which is a range card, and the goal of that is to offset off-peak times to drive revenue in the after-two o'clock hour through the driving range and also additional greens fees. Players, the Advantage Card, which I just spoke of, has been very successful for us. Currently, we have seven hundred and twenty-six members and they're contributing a big portion to that spike in greens fees. Website's been redesigned. It's a little more functional now. We're still tweaking it. We're working on the photography as we speak, but the focus is not only golf, but as you can see, the fish fry, the Centennial Center, it's mobile optimized. We're getting a really good response from the new website. The world's largest golf outing was a great success at Antelope this year. We had a hundred and seventy golfers. It was a Monday in August, which is typically a slower day. We had a really good revenue day and we raised just under five thousand dollars for the Wounded Warrior Project. So, in the first year, really excited about that. We think we can double that next year. John and his team have been meeting with the local golf associations continuously. We met with them pre-transition and they've been very supportive of the club and the programs. The Emory Riddle and Prescott High School golf programs are very active at the club. Currently, we're working on revitalizing the Smoke Eye outing. That would have been like saying Prescott. It was down to thirty-six participants this past year. We're going to leverage the success we've had at some of the other, the Father and Son event and really focus on that. Two thousand fifteen is Antelope's fifty-ninth year of hosting this tournament, so we think we can really, really help drive that. The two-day events have been really good for the community, tourism and everything, so we think we can really step that up. Guns and hoses benefit the tournament, Rotary Night benefit outing, just some of the programs. Working on that relationship with the Arizona Golf Association and the Father and Son. When I first saw the revenue numbers for the Father and Son, I was like, well, we need to have a mother and daughter next weekend and a brother-sister tournament. I mean, it's just been that, the support for that tournament is phenomenal. We've got, we've got still, got some tricks up our sleeve that, some programs that we're going to put out there. Night golf is, what date?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, thank you. So, that would be the first time we try that out here. Profitable food and beverage operation. We are turning the corner there. We've still got a long way to go, but feeling good about that. The restaurant, the Mezzanita Grill, is one of the most supported restaurants I've seen at a golf course. Typically, that's your biggest challenge. So, the day-to-day support of that has been, has been really good. So, feel really good about the direction we're going there. We have been able to save you some margin, cost of sales, portion control, working with our national partnerships. So, we are heading in the right direction there. Feel good about that. Still some work to go. Collateral's been tightened up. We have an in-house design team. So, we've, some of the examples are on the screen. Feel good about that. It's still a work in progress. Our biggest opportunity is at Centennial Center. You know, it's an area that we really need to focus on. So, that's, we think there's a lot of meat left on the bone there. What we have done is we've dedicated a full-time salesperson. Tom Lilly has been here selling golf tournaments for a few years now, working the counter. He's dedicated as a salesperson now, lead generation and tracking. We're working with him on that, getting him some additional training and resources. End of the day, it's all about the experience and we had a great team that we inherited here. We've just worked with them on tweaking a few things and I'm excited about the progress that they've made. that they've made. We mystery shop the staff to let us, give us feedback, unbiased feedback about the experience, and haven't received our first one yet, but we'll look forward to that. And that's all I had, open it up for questions.
Charlie, you're up.
Mayor, thank you, and Chris and John, thanks for coming to give the presentation. Certainly, you know, this was a big step, I think, for the city, and I think it's turning out to be a positive one. I've enjoyed the experience thus far. I know we've got some of our regular golfers in attendance, and while I haven't talked to them, I hope that they've also enjoyed it. So far, you know, we're on the right track. I've talked to several people who have come in and booked the Centennial Center, have specifically said they're impressed with the process that you guys have in place. Events that were otherwise going to other communities are now going to be there. It looks like your total number of rounds are up somewhere maybe between 500 and 700 for those first two months, which is fantastic. The one question I do have, shifting gears over to Joe for just a question, the severance pay that's in the budget from last year. Can you describe what that was, so that we have a little bit better understanding?
Well, it was a number of things, but it was the last paychecks for the employees before they transitioned over to Billy Casper Golf. There was also some full-time employees in there that would've had severance packages, and so all told, those costs came up to $64,000.
Okay. Well, I'm impressed, and I think we're on the right track, and thank you guys for the work you're doing, and look forward to seeing where we're at in a few more months. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming and doing your presentation. If you remember correctly, I didn't play golf when you showed up the first time. Rest assured, I still don't play golf, don't care about golf. What I do care about are the dollars that the city was sticking into a endless pit. And I'm glad you're here. I hope you're as happy to be here as we are to have you here, and I hope we build a strong relationship over the next number of years, so we don't get back into the golf business.
Thank you. And you eat and drink, correct?
Yes, I do.
We will take your money there, sir.
I know you do, and have.
Chris?
Yeah, I just was a little confused, because I think I heard you say you had 100% employee retention, and if that's the case, then why did we have severance packages? That's the only thing that confused me a little bit.
Well, they went from being City of Prescott employees to being Billy Casper Golf employees, which lowers the cost of personnel for the city overall.
And if I could add, with respect to severance, city employees, if they're permanent city employees, they had accrued vacation time and so forth, which we're required effectively by law to compensate them for when they, when they leave city employment.
I see, I get it.
So, it's severance in the sense of benefits that have already been earned, that have to be paid out, just like any other city employee, not some kind of different severance arrangement.
Real quick, Joe, I know sometimes when you have a new marriage, you have some rough roads you have to cross, and I guess I'd ask Billy Casper Golf, as well as the city, how have the maintenance issues been working together with the city being in charge of that, and Billy Casper sitting back and watching?
Absolutely. It's been great. I mean, we-
We have a weekly staff meeting with Jerry and I, sit in with key department folks from both the maintenance side and the operations side, make sure the communication lines are open and regular. We've had absolutely, Jerry may have a different story, but we've had absolutely no issues on our-
I appreciate that. Joe, thank you for what you're doing.
And let me add, Councilman Blair, too. The city took it very seriously that when we entered into this agreement, it was a partnership. We need to deliver the product so that they can sell it. So, really, well, the maintenance staff at the golf course has done a phenomenal job for a long, long time. We kind of went the extra mile with some of the things that maybe hadn't been paid attention to as much. You know, we installed some split rail fence that was kind of a visual thing. We did some landscape improvements around the clubhouse. We rebuilt a retaining wall. But again, we just kind of looked at it like it's a partnership. We need to deliver the product so that they can sell it, and we wanted to make sure we were delivering a good product. So, I think it's worked out well.
As there have been a long-range plan, from my standpoint, I think the golf course lacks trees, based upon the old growth being cut down, many years of poplars and so forth. Do we have a tree replacement plan in place, or are we going to put one in place?
We do have one in place in our capital, that yearly we feed trees in there. We kind of have a unique situation in that, on the, especially on the north course, all the trees were planted about the same time, and they do have a life expectancy. So, we tend to lose a few over the years. We did a good tree trimming program a couple of years ago. So, we're a little behind on it, but we do definitely, every year, have money budgeted in capital, provided it gets approved for a tree replacement program.
I appreciate that, because I think that's part of that visual experience you get, is having some trees to make it look like it's something beneficial to go to, other than just a plot of grass. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Council?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a possibility for any non-golf events to take place on the course, using the pathways, you know, a family run or something like that? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have programs that we're currently working on. One that we've just started doing nationally is foot golf. It's basically golf with a soccer ball. And I'm taking my daughter, my daughters are six and four, and I'm actually taking them out to one of our courses on Sunday afternoon to try it out.
Okay.
They play golf, or they play soccer on Saturday mornings, so I'm going to, I'm trying to get them more into golf by doing that. But it's, yeah, it's going over really well. It's been great for, for non-golfers, it's getting people out to the course. It's actually been a really good revenue source. We've got a few properties that are doing north of $100,000 in foot golf revenue.
Wow.
Sounds great. I like it.
I know that night golf thing was extremely, is extremely successful until alcohol got the better of it several years ago. But at the time when it was in place, if it's managed right, I think it's a real revenue generator as well.
We see a lot of families playing night golf, but you're absolutely right. I mean, that, you've got to keep an eye on the alcohol consumption at night.
And if I could just add, Councilwoman Wilcox, to your question, some of the conversations that we have are, you know, nothing's off limits. I mean, we brought up in discussions, what about bringing the high school marching band out to the driving range, and opening that up later in the afternoon, so that the band could play and people could be entertained. So, really, the creativity that comes from a private enterprise is much more enthusiastic, I guess, than maybe the old model. So, nothing's off limits, and we'll take any ideas that anybody might have.
Great.
Along with that, I tell you what, Joe has quite a few great ideas as well, and I take credit for them, like they're mine to my other properties.
Anyone else? Normally, on a workshop, we don't go to the public, but I see three or four guys back there that look like they're wanting to say something. That spend time on the golf course, I see them come up on my patio.
Because we can't hit it straight. My name is Ernie Gollinger. I've lived here all my life.
Come on down now. What brought you in, this?
Yeah, we just wanted to hear how y'all liked it, and how it was going. And I just wanted to throw my two cents worth in, that-
Good.
Like I said, I was born and raised here, lived here all my life, been playing golf real hard the last 10 years. The golf course has never been run, never been as good a shape as it is right now. And it's not because I work out there three days a week, it's because these people really, they got it. They really, they really know what they're doing, and I think with putting the maintenance in parks and rec, letting them do their thing, it's dynamite. And I just wanted to come and hear how it went over when they gave their spiel. I know the rounds are way up, and I work out there on Sundays, and I've got people that come up, there's a, there's a couple that comes up from Phoenix, they've came up the last 10 Sundays out of Phoenix, and alls they do is rave about, we can't believe we can play for this amount of money, can't believe it's this good a shape, and they come every single week. And these guys are being complimented on that.
Good, Ernie, appreciate hearing that. Thank you. Anyone else, public? Dan, did I see you making a move? Okay. Okay, gentlemen, thanks for the presentation. Continue, continue on, and good luck. Thank you. Mark, it's all yours. We're going to talk about rates.
Thank you, Mayor. As anybody who's been paying attention the last couple of years will recall, it's been about two years, actually, exactly, in October, that we entered into a contract with our consultant, who's here today, Ref from Raftellus, to do the impact fee study and the subsequent, the rate presentation. And we went through several public meetings and a lot of process to get through the impact fee portion, and now we're getting, going on the rate study. We've been working on it for several months with the consultants, and now this starts the public process, and we're going to go over the presentation and the upcoming calendar and sequence of events. With Raftellus, oh, from Raftellus today, we have Rick Jardina, who everybody's known and seen the last two years and more, and Andrew Reams, who will be doing our presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Mark, thank you for that introduction. We are going to talk about water and wastewater rates today, and this being a work session, we're here to present to you our preliminary findings with regard to the financial plan, with regard to the cost of service study, and rates. And those three elements tell us how much money we need in the utility. They tell us who we should get that money from, and then lastly, how we should get that money. And so, those are the steps I'm going to take you through in the information we're going to share with you today. The utilities here in Prescott, like all my clients, are unique, but there's elements of the operations here about the way you've had to make capital investments, about where your system exists, the changes in elevation and terrain that really make this system unique. And it's a complex system, and associated with that is a higher cost than what we might see in other areas. What is not unique to your system is the age and deterioration. We're seeing this across the country as a result of perhaps years of neglect, but perhaps just natural aging of these systems. There have been a number of studies done at a federal level that have looked at the aging infrastructure specific to water utilities and the underground assets, and the dollars necessary for investment over the next 20 or 30 years are staggering. And Prescott is just one example of that. At the same time, coming out of the recession now, we're seeing costs escalate. The statement here about annual increases of 5% to 10% being common might be a little on the conservative side, as we take care of that aging infrastructure. And as we see growth begin to rebound somewhat from the levels that we experienced prior to the recession. We have also seen another phenomenon in the industry. For the last 20 years, we have been asking customers to conserve. They've gotten the message, they're conserving, and while that produces long-term benefits in terms of the need for added capacity in the future, we're a fixed-cost model operating in a variable revenue scheme, and so that presents challenges. When water reductions occur, when we achieve, for example, a 10% reduction in water use, our costs do not go down 10%. The lion's share of our costs are fixed, 70%, 80% of our costs are fixed. The only real variable costs that we have, chemicals and power. So, it's a difficult model. Of all the utilities in the country, ranging from energy to telecommunications to natural gas, water and wastewater are the most capital-intensive of those utilities. Here in Prescott, like many cities across the country, our operations are separate enterprise funds, and what that means is they're separate businesses. We don't receive subsidies or support from other elements of the general fund, nor do we subsidize other elements of the general fund. The revenues that we have are really from two sources. There are the monthly rates and charges that we assess our customers based on how they use the system, and there are those upfront capital fees that Mark referred to, that we looked at as the first phase of this study, the development impact fees that are governed under Arizona law. Those are the only real sources of revenues that we have. We have a lot of other miscellaneous revenues, meter check fees, delinquent payment, and those kinds of things. But our two core revenue sources are the monthly user charges and the development impact fee. And the city has taken it upon itself to, over the last two years, look at those two revenue sources and get those quote-unquote "in line" with where they need to be. And today, we're here to talk about the second portion of that, the monthly user charges. So, as I said, the revenue is restricted to the water and wastewater funds. These funds cannot be earmarked or taken from the fund and used for, used for golf course maintenance, for example, or police and fire. These revenues are collected from our rate payers and need to stay within the utility. Costs are going to increase. I've talked about that, and rates will have to follow. To the extent we have efficiencies, that's wonderful, and the utility's been able to achieve some of those in the course of the last several years, but that's been outpaced by the cost of infrastructure, the cost of replacing pipes, the cost of expanding our treatment facilities. So, as we move forward and define what the real financial needs are of the utilities, we look to what we call here prudent utility financial planning. And we need to ensure that our revenue is sufficient to, on an annual basis, fund our operation and maintenance, maintenance expenses, repay the monies that have been lent to us for capital improvements, and to a certain extent, cash fund some of those capital improvements. We don't want to be out there borrowing 100% to fund our capital improvements. We want to try to leverage the debt that we can, that we can attract and use, but we also want to be investing some cash, so that we're not overly leveraged. At some point, rating agencies, those that lend us money, want to be sure that we have that right balance of cash versus debt funding. We have what are referred to as debt service targets, and I'll talk about those in a minute. We also have cash reserve or operating reserve targets, and these are the measures that we look at to measure the integrity of the water fund and of the wastewater fund. So, this first one, debt service coverage ratio, this is really a measure of our ability to pay back the money that we've borrowed. The mathematical calculation is shown here, it's essentially our revenues less our O&amp;M expenses. That leaves us with an amount that's available to pay debt service. That amount divided by that debt service gives us a ratio. So, our target, as shown here, is 150%. What that tells us is that for every dollar of debt service that we must repay in a year, we want to have $1.50 available. And that's if we include our development impact fees. Now, development impact fees are not a readily reliable source of revenue. If development doesn't occur, we don't generate development impact fee revenues. So, we also have a secondary measure. What's our debt service coverage if we exclude those revenues? And that's 125% or $1.25 for each dollar of debt service. This gives assurance to those who lend us money that we're in a position each and every year to repay that debt. A second measure that we look at is what I sometimes refer to as our walking-around money. Any one of us, we have an operating budget to run our house, to run our business, and the water and wastewater utilities are no different. So, what we look at here is that ending cash fund, that ending balance for each year that's unrestricted, and we look at that in relationship to our annual cash O&amp;M requirements. So, here for the water fund, we establish a reserve of 25% of those cash O&amp;M requirements, and for wastewater, 16%. The reason that we've established water at a higher level is because of the greater variability in the water revenues. If it rains, folks don't use water. If we go into a drought mode, we don't let them use water. And so, we want to have a greater reserve level. We have less variability on our wastewater fund, because those revenues are much more stable based on the manner in which we assess our rates, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So, we try to, as we look at the financial plan and determine, how much revenue do we need to operate this utility? Can we meet our debt service coverage requirements? And can we make, and can we meet our cash reserve requirements? Now, those are good internal measures, but the outstanding debt that we have makes it a legal requirement as well. And rating agencies and those that loan us money will look at our historic performance with regard to those two metrics, and also our projected performance, to see if we're a viable credit, if we're someone that they're interested in loaning money to. And given the size of our capital improvement program over the next several years, we will be out in the marketplace attracting money. So, it's important that we become, that we are viewed as a secure credit. Let's take a moment, talk about the water fund, and then we'll get to the wastewater fund. So, our rate objectives, as we went into this, are listed here. Like most communities, we would prefer to have- Like most communities, we would prefer to have more frequent smaller rate increases than less frequent larger increases. We'd like to avoid spikes or sharp increases, significant increases in our rates. So as we develop the financial plan, we did so with this goal kept in mind. We also looked at the rate structure, and we have today what we call a conservation-oriented or a water use efficiency pricing structure. We've tried to balance a number of objectives, but sending a signal, an economic signal to our customers about the cost of water is important to try to encourage efficient water use, try to raise the awareness of the importance of the resource and keep folks from watering their sidewalk. So we wanted to continue that message. But we also wanted to look at the stability of our revenue stream, and I've mentioned this. And so we've developed, for council consideration, two volume rate structures that, along with our base charge, have differing impacts on the revenue stability. And revenue stability goes to the point I made earlier about declining water use, declining revenues, but yet our costs remain the same. So we want to try to balance that with the objective of conservation. Conservation, taken to the extreme for pricing, would tell us that we should have 100% of our revenues recovered through a volume rate. If I don't use any water, I don't pay any money. That's not very revenue-stable. At the opposite end of the spectrum, to have the most stable revenues available or conceivable, Mark, as the finance director, would love us to have a base charge of $70 or $80, and that's the only charge. I don't care how much water you use. We know we're going to get X dollars every month, and that's a very stable revenue stream. Neither of those fully meet the objectives of the community. And so we've tried to strike a balance in these rate alternatives that we're going to share with you. Cost of service is that second element. Financial plan tells us how much money we need. The cost of service tells us who's placing different demands on the system and what are the costs of those. So we've conducted, following industry standards, a cost-of-service analysis that looks at the cost that each class put on the system. And I'll share those results with you in a minute. But we are out of alignment in terms of the revenues we get from classes and the cost of service they place on the system. So we're suggesting, and we didn't get out of alignment overnight, but we're suggesting that we transition to cost of service over a three-year period. This utility, like many, is going to be challenged with meeting increased regulations and the capital and operations costs associated with that. So we're suggesting the establishment of an aquifer protection fee to help us, it won't fully fund all of those needs, but to put us on a path to funding those needs, and I'll talk more about that later in the presentation. And then lastly, we provide service outside the city of Prescott. And this was actually the very first study that got me involved with the city back in the early '90s, mid-'90s, was the threat of litigation over these surcharges. And so we've taken a similar approach and updated those surcharges for you, and I'll share those results. So, a summary of the water fund. And the top half of this fund is what we call the operating fund, and this is where we measure that working capital or cash reserve. And you can see about halfway down this page, we have a percentage line, 74%, 86%, 97%, and so on. And you recall for the water fund, as noted on the left-hand side, our target is 25%. So as we move forward with the increases shown on the second line, that's going to result in cash reserves that are above our target. But you can see the increases that are necessary, 2% per year. Now, this is consistent with that earlier objective of frequent smaller increases versus less frequent larger increases. So we're proposing these 2% increases each year. Absent any change in the rate structure, all our water customers' bills will go up Towards the lower half of this, we're showing you the other measure of financial stability, and that's the debt service coverage ratio, targets of 150% and 125%. And you can see that we are well above those targets. We are what I would call an attractive credit with these two ratios being above the margins, above the minimums. And those targets are just that, they're minimums. We really don't want to wander towards those targets. We would always like to be above those targets, and this plan illustrates that. This is the capital improvement program that I was referring to. What we're showing in the blue portion of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, is the debt-funded, and in the red, the cash-funded. So it's a balance of borrowings and existing cash. The CIP totals about $84 million over the next five years, and this illustrates the debt issues. We have some past borrowings from the Arizona Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, still have some funds from that that we're going to be using in the next fiscal year, but then we're looking at new borrowings each of the following four years in order to strike this balance between cash and debt funding. The second step I talked about was cost of service. And this pie chart illustrates, on the left-hand side, in fiscal year 1415, how much revenue under existing rates we would receive from each of the customer classes. So for example, the big blue piece of the pie, 64% of our revenues come from the single-family class. Non-residential is 25.6%. On the right-hand side, that pie chart shows us the cost of service. It tells us that single-family represents 62% of the cost of service, but they're providing 64% of the revenues. So this is that out-of alignment that I spoke of earlier. It's not what I would call huge, but we are out of alignment. So we are suggesting that we move over a three-year period to a transition to get us to cost of service. So today, single-family is out of alignment by 2%. And so in very simple terms, they're subsidizing other customer classes. The cost-of-service study takes into consideration the demand data, how customers use the system. So again, we're not way out of kilter here, but there's an opportunity to bring that back into sync. And utilities, about every three to five years, conduct, or the industry recommends you conduct, a detailed cost-of-service study. In those ensuing years, based on how customers use water, based on the investments you might make to meet those demands, utilities tend to get out of alignment. So we're not too far out of alignment here. I've worked with utilities that maybe haven't done a cost-of-service study for 10 years, and you might see double-digit subsidies going on. And we might recommend more than three years to get back into sync. So let me just back up here and say, what this means, all other things being equal, is that the increases to single-family residential customers over the next three years are going to be less than the increases to non-residential. Right now, non-residential is not paying its cost of service, so we need to get that class back into sync. So the increases to that class will be higher, knowing that overall, our total revenue needs to increase about 2% per year. This is your current rate structure. It's a very traditional two-part rate structure. We have a base charge. It's referred to as a flat amount. Regardless of how much water I use, I pay the base charge. And that's shown on the left-hand side of this chart. The vast majority of your customers are 5/8-inch customers, residential, and they pay $12.90 per month regardless of the amount of water they use. Regardless of the amount of water a customer uses, we still have to read the meter. We have to maintain the meter. We produce a bill. We have to have customer service folks on hand, all of these costs that are independent of the amount of water that gets used. And that's really the logic behind a base charge. On the right-hand side, you see what's referred to as the usage tier. We have an inverted block rate approach, where the more a customer uses through these block or tier thresholds, the more they pay on a per-unit basis. So focus on the single-family column for a moment, if you will. And the first tier is 3,000 gallons. So for the first 1,000 gallon, second and the third 1,000 gallon, I pay the same unit cost. Now, I'm going to jump you around to the lower left-hand side. That unit cost is $3.21. That's how much I pay for each of those 3,000 gallons. So $3.21 for the first 1,000 gallons. Then, of course, after I use another 1,000, it goes to $6.42, would be the volume portion of the bill, and so on.
If I could interrupt for a second.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Why is a single-family pricing more than a multifamily?
That's a reflection of the cost-of-service study, that because single-family customers traditionally have significant peaking demands due to irrigation, that most multifamily accounts do not. That's the difference in the cost of service. Great question, great question. So you can see, then if I use over 3,000 gallons, I'll pay $4.83 per 1,000, and right on up to if I use over 20,000 gallons, then for the gallonage over 20, I'm paying $14.49 per 1,000 gallon. This is the conservation aspect, the pricing incentive aspect of the rate structure, that the more I use, my bill's going to be higher, but it's going to be markedly higher based on the increasing unit cost. And there's longstanding science behind this relationship, that if we charge more, we're sending a signal, customers can make an economic decision, and they may elect, we hope they elect, to use that water efficiently and use less water. If they don't, the cost of providing that peaking demand, that incremental water, is greater, and that's reflected in these unit costs. If you go back to the center of this chart, you see for multifamily, we have different thresholds, because a multifamily dwelling unit will use less water than a single-family detached dwelling unit. So that's what's reflected in the differences in the tiers. Then for our non-residential customers, it wouldn't be appropriate to group them all together in a single group because the diversity of use is such great, is so great. So we group them by meter size, and based on the usage by meter, we've established tiers. And same concept, as I move through those tiers, I pay more. And the unit costs, like multifamily, like the question that the councilman had, are those unit costs are a reflection of the cost of service. Now, in addition to these rates on the lower right-hand side, we have an alternative water fee that's assessed to all customers, and that's 85 cents per 1,000 gallon. That's money that's also set aside. We also had, as I mentioned earlier, the surcharges for customers located in the county and in the town of Chino Valley, and those surcharges are shown here as 39% and 30%. So the volume rate of $3.21 for a single-family customer would be 1.39 times greater for a customer in the county and 1.3 times greater for a customer in the town of Chino Valley. And this is a reflection of the risk that the city faces in serving these non-resident customers, these customers who have a choice in where they get their water. We've made investment, capital investment, to serve them at any point in time. They could go somewhere else. So these are non-resident rate payers, who at the end of the day, it's the residents of Prescott that will be ultimately responsible for the cost. So these kinds of surcharges are customary, are standard in the industry to reflect the risk associated with serving non-owner customers, non-resident customers. The proposed base charge, I've talked about, and you see here on the very last line of this slide, 2% increase per year, and that's consistent with the financial plan. And so we're proposing that that charge be increased 2% per year for the next five years. You can see the number of meters we have at these different sizes. We have 19,000 customers with a 5/8-inch meter. So that's the preponderance, that's the majority of your residential customers and a lot of small businesses. We have three 8-inch customers. A customer using, a customer with an 8-inch meter uses a tremendous amount of water. This fee is almost background noise when you look at the totality of their water bill. But nonetheless, it's a fixed source of revenue for the city, and so it's going up 2% like all the other fees. This is part of the revenue stability. We're guaranteed the revenue each month through this base charge. And today, we generate somewhere, well, I'll come back to that in a minute. So, the water rate alternatives. The base charges don't change across these alternatives. The alternatives really deal with the volume portion of the rate structure, that amount that we charge, the unit cost per 1,000 gallons as you move through the tiers. So if you look at the second bullet here under alternative number one, today, we generate about 47% of our use in Tier 1, 39% in Tier 2. And that Tier 1 at 3,000 gallons for single-family, that's generally indoor use. There's not a lot of variability in that. So that's a pretty stable form of revenue. If you look at alternative 2, we're taking that from 47% to 50% in Tier 1 and from 39% to 40% in Tier 2. So that's a movement towards more stable revenue, pushing more usage into Tiers 1 and 2. Tier 1 is largely guaranteed. Tier 2, there's a little variability there. So this was just an alternative that we've developed for council to consider. Alternative 1 is really the current rate structure, and we're just increasing those rates to get us in line with cost of service over the next three years. And both of these alternatives are what I call revenue-neutral. They both generate the amount of, the same amount of revenue each year as we move through this transition to cost of service. And that same amount of revenue is 2% more each year. So, these are the proposed tiers. In order to move that consumption into Tiers 1 and 2, you can see under alternative 2, the change that is part of this alternative. Look down at the very last line of this chart. You see Tier 4 at 25,000 gallons under single-family. Today, that threshold is 20,000 gallons. And just above that, under alternative 2, it's 14,000 gallons, but today, it's 10,000 gallons. Okay, so by raising the tier, we're pushing more usage into the lower tiers, and that has an opposite effect, and I'll get to in a minute. But, so this was just one that we wanted to get in front of council for your consideration to help us a little more with revenue stability. And as I said, between revenue stability and conservation, there are trade-offs. There are trade-offs. These are the unit costs or the rates that would come with each of those. And if I were to draw your attention to the single-family rates, you can see between the current rates and 2015, no change. This goes to what I said earlier, that residential is already, is today paying more than their indicated cost of service, so the increases to residential over the next three or four years will be much smaller than to the other classes. But you can see for residential, in the second year, 2016, there's a small increase, and so on. But the increases for multifamily and non-residential are greater because we need to move them from a position where they're not paying their cost of service to a position where they are. So they'll be seeing increases greater than 2%. Residential will see increases less than 2% as we work to get this alignment with cost of service. These are the charges under alternative 2, and lots of numbers. So what I want to do is get you to the customer impacts, and so we'll get there in just a minute. But I also wanted to talk about this new aquifer protection fee. I won't read this to you, but as I said earlier, this is recommended as a dedicated funding source to help the utility move forward with meeting enhanced regulations and regulatory requirements. We've seen these fees adopted by other communities. I can remember back in the late '80s, developing the environmental fee for the city of Phoenix. It's still in place today. And this was back then, by the city of Phoenix, their recognition of the cost that they incur just to meet regulatory requirements. Has really nothing to do with replacing infrastructure, but we need to be able to treat wastewater to a higher level, or being, or water for that matter. treat wastewater to a higher level or being, or water for that matter. And so this was the way they recognized it and passed that message on to their customers. So the recommendation here is that we consider a fee of 70 cents per month for the smallest meter size. And when you increase that for the larger meter sizes, that would generate about a quarter of a million dollars a year, $250,000 a year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, councilman.
You've been with us for a while?
I have.
All right. And maybe Mr. McConnell can give some clarification. Back before the mayor was the mayor, he was on a particular committee for the city of Prescott with regards to an aquifer protection fee that we investigated and studied, et cetera. It had to do with septic tanks and protecting the reservoirs and et cetera from stuff like that. At some time between that time and today, maybe four years ago, five years ago, I was under the assumption, maybe that's a wrong word, but I thought that we had an aquifer protection fee or one that was proposed of 75 cents a month on all water users of the city of Prescott. And that was the fee that would be used to help finance cleanup of unsuared areas in the city and other things like cleanup of the reservoirs.
This is the fee you're describing? And it's proposed? We, the city, the city has not gone through a rate study which included addressing the particular aquifer protection fee you just described and is defined up on the screen. So this, this is the fee you're describing?
Would this fee also be an appropriate fee to help if in case it comes to bear with regards to the water quality cleanup in both of the reservoirs that we use for recharge?
Explicitly, this is the fee. If you look at the definition, which Rick declined to read, I guess it goes to me, but maintain water quality mandated by state and federal law applicable to surface reuse and recharge assets. The surface ones being Watson and Willa Lakes.
Thank you for the clarification publicly. We do have that, and I do think that at some point in history, maybe not all the faces on this council were the same, but this council, at least once, if not twice, have said that we were looking, wanting this fee imposed for exactly those purposes because it just keeps getting more expensive. It doesn't go awry. The fact of the matter is, we do have deteriorating infrastructure. A lot of it's real old, and a lot of the drainage that washes everything down into those reservoirs, that's creating the issue that we seem to have out there with ADQ and those bodies of water, has to be addressed.
Right. And Mayor Protem, as you're describing, the state of Arizona Department of Environmental Quality is poised to require that, under Clean Water Act, the city of Prescott improves the water quality in Watson and Willa Lakes, starting with Watson Lake. Although they have not formally issued that, certainly they are close to issuing that mandate. And then, as we have talked about many times, it will be a matter of looking at that mandate, what water quality improvement is required, what the alternatives are for addressing that water quality deficiency described in that mandate, and how we're, you know, what amount of money is going to be required over what period of time. So this is the fee which provide an initial funding source or a funding source at an initial level to address those water quality requirements of the state and federal governments.
Thank you. Proactive is better than reactive. And the sooner we get on doing what we need to do, the better off the citizens of Prescott are going to be. So, go ahead.
And specifically, can this protection fee be used to assist homeowners who are currently not connected to the sewer with the cost of connecting?
I can perhaps comment on that. I think that there is certainly a legal question involved there. But at this point, I think it's too early to say what the uses will be other than directly dealing with where all of that water quality deficiency is manifested, i.e. the lakes. At this, and, you know, generating $250,000 a year, it's conceivable that we'll have an annual expense of just dealing with the lakes of that or multiples of that. When we get into providing customer assistance, you know, sewer-ing, unsuared areas, there's been a lot of work done there, this fee at this level will not be adequate to deal with that. But that's a conversation as we refine the approach.
Okay.
Thank you, councilwoman. The water in those reservoirs has to be of a certain quality to maintain our ability for recharge, et cetera. So every citizen in the city of Prescott who's now receiving water from, from the city is going to be compromised if we don't do something to maintain that water quality in accordance with what Mr. McConnell said, the standards of ADQ that have been put before us.
If I, if I could just comment, when, when we looked at this, and it's been seven years ago, I think it's seven years ago. The unsuared areas, because of the topography of Prescott, most of those homes, the leach fields leach into the drainage areas just because of the nature of our topography. So when we have rains and we take water from the surface in Prescott to the drainage areas and end up in the lakes, the intent of this was to give the city some assistance to help clean up that contamination that happens every time it rains. And we, we looked at, at that moment in time of some type of assistance to bring all of those homes up to be on the, on the city sewer. The numbers are strong, they're, they're out of reach. And a sewer improvement district of some time was probably the only way that, that could happen. But it's expensive, extremely expensive. And, and so expensive that the people affected were not inclined to even, to look at it.
But given the public benefit of connecting those unsuared areas, it seems that some assistance to those homeowners to make it affordable, to encourage them to do that would be a wise thing to do.
Okay. And, and the theory is good. But if you go back and look at those homes and the age of those homes, some of them, and multiply the factor that, that they have not been paying sewer charges for all of these years, they have not had to pay a sewer charge. And if you multiply the life of those homes by the number of months, or the number of months that they have not had to pay that charge, that becomes a big number also.
Right.
So those homes have enjoyed a monthly savings for all these years of X number of dollars. But it's very difficult at, at any moment to say, wow, the cutoff is now. And the, the rest of the public has not been inclined to want to help pay for those homes that are not sewored now. So it's, when we have to face that challenge, I hope you're around.
Councilwoman, there was some discussion when this originated, that over the years, this could build for a pool of money for low-cost financing capability for some of the new alternative septic systems that are, that are possibly every bit as good as hooking these people up to the city sewer system, considering everything that's, that's put into, into place. So I don't think anybody said that any of the items on the table back then have been taken off, other than the fact that the cost is prohibitive to directly hook them up. But the cost may not be prohibitive to get in the new alternative septic systems that would keep all that stuff out of the drainage that the mayor is referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I was around in the late 90s as Lake Havasu sewered their city, 30,000 folks and $500 million. It's not easy. Not sure I want to go through it again.
Yeah, well, if Jim was referring to some of the, the alternate system.
Yes.
Even though they are, there's an expense involved, but you still would be saving that monthly charge.
That's right.
Of not being on the city sewer. So it's not a one-way street. You have to look at both sides of it. And some of the homes that have been here 50 years and have never paid a sewer charge, they've accumulated a major savings.
So this fee, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, Mayor, I think the problem with catching up on that, septics is a problem of motivation because the only time you're motivated to hook up the sewer is when your septic tank's failing, and then you got highly motivated people out there. And, and sometimes they're just in a bad spot. But, yeah, the cost would be tremendous.
So converting this $70 per single-family equivalent into a, an assessment schedule, this would be the associated fee based on the different meter sizes. And again, an aquifer protection fee per month, per account.
So, that number overall?
Yes.
All those accumulated, what's the number per year? Do you have a grip on that?
That would generate about $250,000 per year. I mentioned earlier the surcharges for our non-resident customers. And you can see on this table on the left, the current surcharges. Folks in unincorporated areas outside the city pay a 39% surcharge. In Chino Valley, the town of Chino Valley, they pay a 30% surcharge. These surcharges were established years ago. We undertook a process, a methodology to look at these, again, using similar approach. And you can see the updated value shown on the right-hand side. They're not materially different, 39% down to 37% for Chino Valley, 30% up to 34%. They're not materially different, but nonetheless, we would recommend that we adopt the new surcharges as a reflection of the cost associated with serving these customers located outside the city. And these would be like the new rates if council so elects, effective January 1st in just a few months. I wanted to show you some of the customer bill impacts based on these alternatives. So, this particular chart, the greenish line is the current monthly bill for a residential customer at different usage levels. From zero use, where only the base charge would be assessed, right on up to 10,000 gallons. And you can see, no surprise, the current bill would be less than either of the two alternatives we're looking at. Alternative two is somewhat higher because the rates are higher associated with that alternative. And we took this particular chart only to 10,000 gallons to show you what represents the vast majority of your customers. You have relatively few customers using more than 10,000 gallons. You do have some. But if you recall, under alternative two, we're suggesting that the threshold be changed from 20,000 gallons to 25,000 gallons when you go into that last, most expensive tier. This chart shows the impact of that. That under alternative two, what this really does is it results in customers who use 20,000 gallons and more paying less than they would today and less than they would under alternative two. So this is that balancing, or in some cases, conflict between what I talked about with revenue stability and conservation. This gives you more stable revenue, but to do so, customers at the high end would pay a lower rate. So it's fighting with itself a little bit in terms of the conservation and the revenue stability signal. But that's why we wanted to give council a different alternative to consider. Alternative one, as I said, is really no change to the tiers, and it's a continuation of that conservation-oriented approach. Alternative two, while it's conservation-oriented, is not as strong a message to customers who use a lot of water. Now, customers who use 25,000 gallons or more, it's less than 1% of your customers. So it's very few, but nonetheless, there are some. So I would say probably between customers using more than 20,000 gallons, it's probably less than 5% of your customers. So while we're giving up a little bit on the conservation signal to 5% of our customers, we're picking up a little more stable revenue in tiers one and two. So that's the trade-off between these alternatives. And I'm going to show you, after we talk wastewater, the impact on a combined bill, water and sewer bill. But let's talk wastewater for now.
Can we stick with water for just a few minutes?
Absolutely.
Perfect. I want to go back to your comment about multifamily versus single-family and their cost for service delivery.
Yes.
And you had mentioned that, at least it appears, that the multifamily service delivery is less than what we're paying for the single-family. If you look at the consumption rate as an example on page 11, all of our tiered rates are less for the multifamily than the single-family. And then we start looking at the page 15 and page 16, where we're talking about the water volume charges. We talk about a 2% increase, and I'm seeing here in the single-family where, you know, over the span of time, it'd be about 4.9% from current. Tier fours, 4.7. In the multifamily, though, the consumption increase is 18% over that same amount of time. And if we continue down to the non-residential, our commercial users, we're at 28% increase over that time. And then we kind of hit on the miscellaneous charges, but I'm, I want to hit, go back to that for a second and understand, what do we put as a coin-operated water user? Is that laundromats, car washes, things of that nature?
It's my understanding, no.
Okay.
No. Laundromats and the other example, you gave car washes, those would be in your non-residential categories. Coin-operated are...
That's the water station.
Exactly. These are the vending machines where you can fill water bottles.
Okay. So, one of the things that, and maybe this has a place in this, maybe it doesn't, but I'm looking at, if somebody ties into our system, you know, a multifamily user is going to eat up more of our water allocation, and they're going to require a higher allocation of water, depending on their number of units, compared to a single-family residence. And I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm having trouble putting together our cost of providing them the water. And I realize that they pay a resource impact fee, but that doesn't come anywhere close really to covering the value of that water. I have a dollar amount in my head that the water itself, the physical value of that water, is not accounted for in our water rates. More so, the production cost and delivery cost is what's accounted for. Does that make sense, kind of where my mind's turning?
Let me, let me see if I can catch up with you on that one. The cost of service, the cost to provide service to a multifamily unit, because we, we assess our base charge on a per-unit basis and we look at our, let me back up here to, if you look at the tiers, that's 1,700 gallons that is in tier one for multifamily, that's on a per-unit basis. So if I have 10 units in my building, regardless of my meter size, the first 17,000 gallons would be charged at the lower rate. The cost of providing that service to that multifamily unit is in fact cheaper than providing the service to a single-family detached. Often, because these accounts don't have irrigation associated with them, they might have a separate irrigation tap that would then be under the non-residential. So I just envision a 20-unit apartment building. No irrigation, they use the same amount of water every month of the year. That's a relatively inexpensive customer to serve. Contrasted with my single-family detached house, where my use in the summertime can peak dramatically, and the city's having to build facilities to meet that peak, and those facilities sit idle the rest of the year. Okay, so it's very expensive to serve a single-family residential customer. It's very expensive to serve an irrigation-only tap. But multifamily, with their relative level of use, is a less expensive animal to serve. But now to your, I think, other point about the... But now to your, I think, other point about the value of water? Well, the value of water, if we were to put an economic measure on it, the value of a gallon of water would be the same for a multifamily or a single-family or an irrigation. The value of that, thousands of gallons. What we pick up in our financial plan, our cost of service and our rate design, is the cost that the city incurs to deliver that, to treat and deliver that value of water, or that 1,000 gallons of water, not the replacement cost of that or the marginal cost. If we included the marginal cost, we would be generating a lot more revenue than we have expenditures for. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. It can be a bad thing in a legal sense because we're generating more revenue than our average embedded costs. And so that can be a challenge. And our rate structure to a certain extent, when you look at the unit cost, where in tier four, a customer's paying $14.49 for the 1,000 gallons, that tends to be more reflective of marginal cost. And all of our customers, to some extent, get into tier four. Many of our customers get into tier four. So I think that's where we tend to pick that up. But multifamily is a less expensive class of service, class of customer to serve.
When you speak of the multifamily, 20 units, is that on a single meter?
They may be, they may be on a three-inch meter or a four-inch meter. So they would be.
So that's the economy of scale at that point. You don't have the billing costs and all of these other for 20 units.
Right. We, the utility, are running a single service line to that building, a single meter, to serve those 20 units.
So then I have a follow-up question on replacement of infrastructure cost. Is it really negligible if you're looking at, say, a three-inch water main to a six-inch water main and the cost of replacement?
I'm going to give you, I'm a CPA and not an engineer, so I'll give you my answer and then let the engineers chime in. My understanding is you're digging a hole and the incremental cost associated with digging a hole for a six-inch is not that much. You do have incremental costs based on pipe diameter. So Joel, that's the non-technical answer.
And I think you're right. The difference in cost between a three-inch and a six-inch, there's some differential material costs certainly, but excavation, that, those types of costs, very similar.
So generally negligible?
Yes.
Okay. So just the last comment before we move from my perspective into wastewater is when we talk about the non-residential, I think it's something that, while we're just getting this information today, we need to follow up on because you're potentially talking about a significant increase in our business community on their water costs. And, you know, we keep talking about economic development and the desire to make it affordable to do business in our community. I want to see how that really ties in. And so maybe if we could get some examples of what type of impacts that could have to our business community, I think it'd be valuable to understand.
A little later on in the presentation, we have two examples. It may not be, I don't know that it meets really what you're looking for in a more diverse set of customers, so we can probably bring back to you some more sample customers and impacts.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, Mayor. For Mark Woodfield, if this moves forward and the council approves it based upon that alternative water fee, and you were talking about roughly 250,000, I did some number crunching, I come up with about 220,000, neither here nor there, but I would suspect that that will be accounted for differently within our fund.
The aquifer protection.
Yes, sir.
Fee that you're talking about, yeah, it would be a separate fund, much like the alternative water fund is, where it's not mixed for operation, this for specific capital projects.
Great, thanks.
Where's our average usage at for a single-family residence? Where are we at?
It's approximately 5,000 gallons.
Because you know what? When you get into tier three and definitely into tier four, you got to have some kind of agricultural thing going on to use that much water, don't you?
Or a large lot that you're wanting to water a lot, there can be a number of reasons, yeah.
I just get concerned when I see, you know, on the whole conservation end, this tier thing has been really helpful to us in pushing conservation because people don't want to spend more money on it. I'd hate to see anything that seems like it sends us backwards. And when we were talking on page 14 about that, it just seems like we are kind of going the wrong way. You're talking about that balance or whatever. I think we need to almost keep that, that pressure on to use less water, don't you think?
That's the kind of feedback we're looking for.
Also, if I could ask, I had this pulled up. It's a sample of a Steve Prescott utility statement. And if you could, on your next presentation, instead of just talking about water, I'd like to see a sample of a bill so we can see all of the charges that we're, that we're asking our citizens and business community to pay. Because it's starting to look like my cellphone bill, where it's this charge for this and this tax for this. So I'd like to see a full picture of what you're asking us to do.
We've got a partial snapshot of that, not broken down into all those line items, but we can bring back a bill today and a bill tomorrow. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Marlon. I appreciated your comments, Charlie, about businesses. And yours, Greg, about the bureaucracy and looking like your cellphone and everything. Keep in mind a couple of things with regards to code rewrite, because some of us are sitting there with all the mandates we slap on property owners. A lot of it has to do with landscaping. So here we are, ordering them to use water to some degree, all right? And then we tell them that they don't maintain it, we're going to write them up on another. That's why we got a code enforcement guy now. You better cut the weeds, we told you to water. So just keep some of these things in mind when we sit down and look at some of this.
Charlie.
And I just have, going back to my earlier comment about the value of water, I think one thing that I failed to bring up, and this is for the topic of discussion today and see where we take it, but we have lots that already have a water allocation in the city. They can go build a house, pull their meter, and they're good to go. Where I'm trying to draw the delineation is between something that's already got a water allocation that we're going to serve and something where we're creating a new water allocation. Because there's nowhere in there that we account for that in our impact fees, our rate structures. And that's where that multifamily question comes from. So if you have a house on, let's say, the right side of the street, that was a historically platted lot, it puts in a water meter, pays all of its regular fees, and we service water on the ongoing basis. You have a house on the other side of the street that was not historically platted, it's part of a new subdivision, we've just allocated water to it. And now we have gotten rid of a resource that is no longer available to the city and put it into that lot. You know, maybe it's not the water rates per se, but it's part of this larger-scale discussion of we don't have a lot of that resource left.
I agree with Councilman Kuknio that we need to encourage more conservation, not just because it's a good thing to do for the environment, but we have more land that we can annex and we anticipate future growth. And growth to a city is very important to its economic vitality. So I would go even further with the rate structure to encourage conservation.
And council, this kind of feedback is exactly what we're looking for. We often go through what we call a conceptual design session with elected officials, with the decision-makers, and ask you to tell us, what are your important objectives with regard to the pricing structure? So this is exactly what we're hoping to hear and why we did present two alternatives. One that is consistent, mirrors what you're now doing, and one that is different. And we were hoping this would generate some discussion. So thank you very much.
You'll get some from me here after Jane's comments, because I believe in water conservation. But I don't believe in any cost. I think that we're treating water as our plant for all kinds of mandated federal regulations, which is the cost of water. It costs us a lot of water for arsenic treatment and all that kind of stuff. I believe within somehow, with the new regulations and new meters, there should be an incentive, a reduction in cost based upon using a cistern, a water catchment basin on your new properties. Because you are now reducing the amount of water pumped from our facility, including power, including treatment, and there should be some kind of variable that you give to that customer for being energy-efficient and conservation-minded. And I think that if you put it on there, we're not out anything other than the fact that we're not creating more, you know, more cost for the customer. So I don't know that anybody's ever asked you that question, but if you're going to continue to talk about conservation, it does make sense within new construction. Say, for instance, out at Mike Fan's properties out there, where when they put in a meter, they get a reduction in the cost of the meter, or that would probably be the easiest way to do it because it's not an ongoing reduction. But it is an ongoing, it is a cost reduction in the meter cost if they put in a catchment basin that's used for irrigation.
I'd have to maybe defer to legal counsel or others here, but I know that issue has been explored. And in some areas, like Colorado, you cannot do that because that water must be returned to the downstream user. And so to catch that on your property in a rain barrel or a cistern is quote-unquote against the law.
Wow.
Because of water rights issues.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
And we're going to fight like hell against it.
Yeah. But one of the impacts here is, I guess, if it doesn't get returned to the wastewater system, what are the impacts with regard to recharge credits? And just a question, it's worth exploring.
Well, and again, not to belabor the fact, but I happen to have one. So I can tell you the value of mine to my summertime watering is huge. And it's also huge, it doesn't kick me over to the next rate of spending more money on water. So I'm doing my share not to cost the city more money to, number one, pump the water out of the ground, to treat the water. So there is a trade-off there, and we have to be cognizant of that trade-off.
And that was voluntary, not mandated?
Absolutely. And I'm not saying it needs to be mandated, but there should be a voluntary reduction in your cost of your meter if you put one in.
So, not to belabor the point, but haven't you already received that economic benefit? Because now you're not going into tiers two, three, and four?
Well, yeah.
Yes, so we have sort of a roundabout way incentivize that, maybe unintentionally.
But there needs to be a way to let the new customer know that's building a house, that there is a benefit to doing that.
Okay, so going back to this conservation idea, because we've had, we've talked about conservation a lot, and it's been important to the city. But in looking at rates, estimated income, there has to be a threshold of what this proposed rate structure would allow. If there was a 10% reduction in usage because of increased conservation, as an example, where does that put us? We've talked even in the beginning of the proposal that our infrastructure costs aren't going to go down, the replacement costs aren't going to go down. So I would be curious at a future meeting, what's the threshold there? The tie-in, of course, then to the wastewater operation, because that was an issue when we had as much conservation as we did, what it did at Sun Dog Treatment Plant. And then subsequent to that, is it indoor/outdoor conservation? And then what impact is that having on our recharge credits?
I think that's a separate discussion, Councilman, but we do, you know, we do have a conservation rate. We have, the city, the city and the city's customers, the public, has observed conservation. That is not a straight line. You just don't keep conserving and saving water, it's a curve. You reach a practical limit. And I think that there is argument out there that we have, if not reached, approached that practical limit. And so if we want to preserve the conservation that we have already achieved and not go backwards, we're going to have a similar rate structure that we have now. It's going to cost more because the cost of providing services has gone up. But by tweaking the rates in a major way to lower the thresholds, which means kicking people up in the tiers, we're probably not going to see much in terms of water savings. What we probably are going to see is much better attendance at the city council meetings.
And I appreciate it. I think the key point that I'm trying to make, even though it's intertwined to multiple different things, if the council is considering anything related to additional pressures on conservation, I want to understand what that threshold is and its impact to the actual operation and the fund balances over time, so.
And there is nothing on the table tonight that, in my estimation, will have any incremental appreciable impact on those things that you're discussing.
Okay.
I won't say we've reached the point of levelization, but with regard to indoor use, we've made a tremendous amount of progress. You can't go to Home Depot and buy anything but a low-flow toilet. And so indoor use, we're reaching that level point. Outdoor use, as I mentioned earlier, over the last 20 years, the industry has largely gotten what it asked for in terms of heightened awareness about water use and water conservation. And the biggest area where water is still wasted is outdoor use. We've made tremendous inroads, but there's more inroads to make there. But with regard to the plans that you have before you today, the 2% increase that we're proposing in overall revenues, when I apply a price elasticity coefficient, you raise my price, I'm going to use less, to that, it's insignificant. But the fact that we still have a tiered approach, where we're charging $14 or $15 per 1,000 gallons for someone using over 20,000 gallons, that still remains a price incentive.
Basically, kind of repeating a lot of the things you just said, you know, we can talk about water catchment, we can talk about low-flow toilets, low-flow showers, but when you look at our usage and we're pretty much flat through the winter months and then summer comes and we push up to the sky, you know, Sean Riedel did a great job when she was here. I mean, we got everything that explains this sitting right out in our pamphlet rack right out there. We need to encourage, like, native plants that are used to live in here. You know, if you're going to bring your tree from the Midwest and plant it here and it loves lots of water, you're going to have to pay for it. Having this tier approach is the best tool that we got to encourage conservation. So I think we need to keep it going in the right direction. And if you, you know, the water's available, but, you know, we're pumping water out of the ground in Chino Valley, piping it here, sending it through, it's clean enough to drink, and we're pouring it on the ground for landscaping. You know, if you're going to choose to do that on a big scale, like the tier three, tier four users, you're going to have to pay for that use. And hopefully, with those incentives, it will encourage people to use trees that are used to live in here, trees that are used to be drought-resistant. So I just want to make sure that we keep that in.
Jim.
Just one more word of caution. I remember a timeframe when we were touting about how well we did with conservation and we broke the pooper. And we had to put a lot of money in out there because we didn't move the solids down the lines that needed to be moved. So let's just make sure we keep everything right up front.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go on to wastewater.
Let's go on to wastewater. The same kind of objectives. Let's go with levelized rate adjustments as opposed to less frequent spikes, sharp increases. We have similar misalignment in cost of service. The relationships have changed a little bit, and I'll talk to those in just a minute. And so, and so similar to water, we're recommending a three-year transition. And then we've also looked at a treated effluent rate. The water, wastewater that comes out of the back of the treatment plant that gets reused, what should we be pricing that at? So we'll share some of that information with you. Similar presentation to what you saw in water, but look at the top portion of here, the annual increases, 95511. This is to a little bit of catch-up in infrastructure needs that have been ignored or delayed where we haven't been proactive. And now we're trying to catch up a little bit. You can see our cash reserves and coverage ratios, again, still make us an attractive credit. And we're even building a cash balance that will allow us to, beyond this snapshot, this window, address our ongoing capital needs. But there are some pressing needs today that indicate the, are indicative, are necessary for the increases that we're showing here. For example, in the first year, the 9% increase. For example, in the first year, the 9% increase. Absent a significant increase, you can see our coverage ratio at 1.28. We would not achieve that. We would be far shy of 1.28 with 0% increase. Even something less than nine is going to drop us below 1.25. So the 9% is necessary in order to get us to that threshold, exceed that threshold, put us in a position of being able to raise capital going into the future. And so that's really what's driving these rate increases on a going forward basis. Now, so here's a similar presentation, our capital needs, showing how we're going to fund those between debt and cash, about $41 million over the next five years, and a number of new issues. So we're going to be issuing a significant amount of debt. On the water side, it was more cash funding, less debt funding, just the opposite here on the sewer side. Okay? But I think it will put us in a position to where beyond this 2018-2019 window, we should be able to do a little more cash funding. Because our coverage ratio, our revenue increases are driving, are driven by the coverage ratio. And that delta, remember I said we needed a $1.25 for each dollar of debt service? That difference, that 25 cents in my hypothetical, my example, that generates cash. And so we'll be using that cash in the future and avoiding debt issues. Cost of service, exactly the same kind of presentation, but preview, but if you look at residential, where it shows here 74.7% of our revenue comes from residential. The residential represents 76.4% of the cost. So in water, it was just the opposite. Residential was generating more revenue than their cost. Here in wastewater, our cost, as represented for the residential class, exceeds our revenue. So it's just the opposite relationship. Again, you can see the percentages here we're showing on the bottom, they're not, these aren't double-digit subsidies or misalignments that we have. They're relatively small and so we're proposing though nonetheless, that we don't try to correct these overnight. Let's take three years to get these back into alignment.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
And you know, when we were talking about the Water Capital Improvement Program, we're seeing that existing WIFA that was out there, would that new debt also be WIFA? Because that's pretty cheap money, isn't it?
It is. There's always a little bit of administrative cost associated with dealing with WIFA. So we haven't specified where these new issues will come from. We've used some reasonably conservative repayment terms and interest costs. Mark, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Just, yeah, it would, again, we would definitely keep WIFA in mind. We would always look at WIFA as an option and consider it in relation to its rate and the additional costs that it brings. But as Rick said, he put this together with financing. So if it isn't WIFA and it ends up being an MPC bond, you know, that, we could go either way, we'll go whichever is most cost effective at the time.
Thanks.
I just had one quick question, and maybe it's towards Craig or Henry. What would be an example to justify for the folks who are looking, are watching this meeting and reading the paper or listening to the radio, that 9% would be justified? What kind of projects are we, that we need to catch up on this quick?
Well, the fact of the matter is, if, that that answer is presented in the city's capital improvement program for the wastewater fund. And for decades, the city has not either dealt with, because the funding was not there, our wastewater fees were very low. So there were situations and facilities that either were not dealt with, or they have reached their end of serviceable life, or they're under capacity and so forth. So what do I mean by that? You know, we have just commissioned a $35, $40 million wastewater treatment plant up the airport. Somebody has to pay for that.
Right.
And you know, that's, that is a substantial cost. We have to continue. And if you looked, if you looked back at the last three years, you will have seen significant increases in the wastewater charges because we knew we were going to have to accumulate money to build that, you know, and to guarantee that debt. We have a trunk main, one of our biggest facilities, which carries basically all the wastewater from this side of town out to the Sun Dog Plant, that needs to be replaced. We have wastewater pump stations. We have, we have all kinds of systems in our water courses. And you know, in years past, meaning when a lot of these facilities were built decades and decades ago, we have manholes, we have sewer lines in water courses.
Right.
And so all of these things I'm describing have either not been addressed in the past, or they have not had to be addressed in the past. They need to be addressed now and in the coming years. As Rick has pointed out, our approach is to level that capital improvement program and that rehabilitation component of our overall improvement program, so that's 9% instead of 27%.
Right.
So it's a very long-term view of graduated increases, but they are substantial. And just as was described, there is a cost which was not paid for decades. And so we all had negligible rates and it was great. But you know, that's not the way it works. You know, whether it's a car you drive or it's a wastewater system, at some point, you got to fix it or replace it and we're there.
Thank you, Craig.
And to Mayor Protem's point, are we building, with all these capital improvements that we're looking at today moving forward, are we building a system that can handle our conservation today and if we get even better at it in the future?
Well, absolutely. You recall, you may recall during the presentations on the wastewater treatment plant, one of the first things they did was they looked at the waste stream, what's coming into the plant, you know, what the concentration is and so forth. And so the process design, the way this, the wastewater treatment plant is designed and operated is for a much stronger waste stream coming into the plant.
And the, and this infrastructure that we're building to transport the solids to the plant will have to update and we have conservation and less, more solids, less water in mind as we build this.
Well, that's right. And it's design criteria and of course, you know, you don't, you don't refine it down to the tip of a pen, you've got to provide some headroom there.
Of course.
For things that vary. But you know, the design criteria, our prudent design criteria, which recognize what we have experienced as a trend and will continue to experience in terms of what you're describing.
This is your current wastewater rate structure. And similar to water, we have a base charge, a flat amount that every customer pays regardless of water use or sewer flows, and then a volume charge. And today we have a slight differential between residential and non. And as you'll see in our recommendation, based on the cost of service results, we're recommending that those begin to approach one another and by the time we get to, I think, year three, they're equal. Then below that, you see the volume charges. Based on average monthly winter water consumption, that's how we bill sewer. We don't consider the amount of water you use in August for sewer billing, because that goes out onto the grass and doesn't get returned to the sewer system. So we look at winter water use and we use that as a proxy. It's not 100% accurate, but it's a much closer proxy of the amount of water you do return to the system than the July and August use. So we use that and we take that average water use times your applicable rate. These rates are indicative of assumptions made about the strength of the wastewater that you're discharging into the system. When we look at a restaurant or a market with disposal, that's a higher strength, it's dirtier water than we get from a traditional residential property. And so that's the reason for these differences in the values.
Mayor? We, I think most of us, I got a letter and we probably all got copied on a letter from a gentleman that thought that way was kind of unfair because there's a lot of people that come here during the summer months and then they're gone in the winter months. So their sewer rates will be very, very low because they're snow burdened down in Sun City. How are we addressing that or is that just something that we have to live with?
Two-part question, two-part answer.
Yes, sir.
We don't just have to live with it, but to a certain extent we are. We address it primarily through the base charge. This base charge at $19 or $20 per month per account is relatively high. And it reflects a whole lot more than customer-related costs, customer service costs. So that's one way that we deal with the absentee account holder. They pay that whether they're here or not. That's the primary manner in which we deal with that. Again, when they're here in the summer, there's an element of that water. And I guess I'd have to ask a question, I wish I knew the answer to this. For those customers that aren't here in the winter, whose average monthly water use is really low, do we have any sort of adjustment for that, Mark?
No, like you said, Rick, that's why we have a higher base charge. They pay that 12 months a year, even though they might only live here three months. And they do, there are some accounts that, you know, are not here in the winter, so they have lower consumption. We, very few actually have zero consumption during that time because they are here part of the time, you know, up for the weekends or, or part of that six-month period. But overall, you know, they're relatively, there aren't that, that many of those out there. But you know, it is an overall issue. That's why the base charge is a little higher than actual cost of services would call for.
What we've got is, we've got a fairly straightforward, conventional, simple rate structure. There are any number of particular circumstances like, like you just described, where we, we could effectively modify that rate structure to pick up those people. And so if we have alternative one, alternative two, we can have alternative 2A, 2B, 2C. Then the next person that walks in the door says, well, I'm special two and I want a special charge. So I think that overall, as has been scribed, we're addressing it in the base charge, but if, you know, if, if we believe it's significant, then it can certainly be dealt with where it looks, you know, for, for, for those customers who are obviously gone during a period of time, well then, you know, the rate structure can look at the average annual use, probably discounted for some estimate of summer water use as a class of customers and so forth. But again, now we're getting more complicated.
I understand and thank you for that explanation. Just when a citizen gives a letter and makes a good point, you want to bring it up and get that explanation. Thank you.
So as we move forward, we're really not proposing any changes to the structure of the wastewater rates. But obviously to generate 9% more revenue, all the charges have to be increased. And there'll be different increases across the classes as we seek to bring the classes in alignment with cost of service over the next three years. So these are the proposed rates and at the top, we're showing the monthly service charge. Today at $19 for residential, 20 for non-residential. You can see by the time we get to 2017, which is the end of our three-year cost of service transition, those charges are the same. In the lower half of the chart, we're showing you the volume rates, the amount per thousand gallons based on your average water use. And you can see how those change over time. And if you were to put pencil to paper, you would see between now and 2017, the residential values increase at a greater percent than the non-residential. And that's to bring them in alignment with cost of service. And I'll have another chart that shows you customer impact in a moment so you can see the average bill.
Before we go there.
Yes.
Got a question on these rates and just some of the assumptions. The septic haulers, as an example, there's no modification at all over this span of time. And how many people, how many households are on septic roughly in the city of Prescott?
1,400.
1,400, somewhere in there? And Chris, I'm going to put you on the spot, where else can people take septic in the tri-city area?
This is pretty much where we come to.
So a majority, I would assume, of the usage here is non-residential, non-resident, coming into our system. But yet we're not accounting for that, other than to say, we're charging quite a bit per thousand gallons, but it's not changing.
Well, we take donations from all around the tri-city area.
And I know from previous conversations that we've had in this chamber, that septic is concentrated and it takes more for us to deal with. So I'm curious, if we're talking about rates and we're talking about where we're going to be increasing, I mean, on residential, over the span of time, it's 36%, but on the septic hauler, it's zero. The next item is restaurants. I've gone out with the guys in the wastewater collection and they're constantly servicing lift stations and pipes related to restaurants, all the time. And yet we're only doing a penny increase over this period of time. And so as we are talking about impacts and where those funds are coming from and who's paying for what, I just want to understand more of those assumptions that have gone into this study.
Let me address both of those. We'll get to septic haulers in a little more detail, but let me give you the soundbite first. The cost of service for handling the waste from a septic hauler, as we've analyzed it, is less than $100. And that's why you don't see an increase, but we'll share with you in a moment some comparisons of septic hauler rates assessed by other communities. So we'll get to that. Similar comment has to do with restaurants, as I showed you a moment ago. Right now, we have our non-residential account subsidizing residential. So absolutely, your observations about the activity associated with dealing with restaurants is accurate, but that cost of service is already covered by that $6.28. Don't operate from a presumption that, well, we have a ton of activity, $6.28 must not be covering it. It's just the opposite. $6.28 is covering that. So that's why you don't see an increase here. The monthly residential wastewater bill, again, we talked about it's based on average winter consumption, average water consumption. If mine happens to be zero, I'm still paying $19 or $20 a month. Under the proposal, if my AWC, and actually for an average city customer, it's about 5,000 gallons, it might be even a little less. So you can see the difference here. Today, it's about $40 and it would go to roughly $50 with these increases that we're talking, with the increase that we're talking about next year. And I've got another table that gives you even more information there. You have very, very few residential customers who have an average winter consumption in the 10,000 gallon range or more. That would be highly unusual.
What would that be?
Me and my six kids.
Yeah.
Perhaps? So here's the chart I kept referring to that I was going to bring you to. This is showing impacts, a lot of numbers, but if you could focus in that top section, residential. If you look at the very first grouping there, water, wastewater, usage at 5,000 gallons. Today, the bill for this customer, and Councilman Lizelle, this doesn't get to what you want in terms of the bill.
Right.
But this at least shows you water and wastewater. And embedded in here are all of our fees, our aquifer protection fee, all those are embedded in here, okay? Today, the bill's $76. Tomorrow, under alternative one, it'll go to $81. And you can see the biggest increase there is about $4 in wastewater. Under alternative two, it's about the same, $81. And sewer doesn't change under alternative, wastewater doesn't change under alternative one or two. It's the same because we're not proposing any changes. The only change between one and two is the water bill. Okay? So today, it's $76. In 2017, it'll be $87 under either alternative one and two for the average residential customer. So virtually no change between alternative one and two. Look at the next customer we profiled for you, using 25,000 gallons of water and having a wastewater average of 15,000. Odd customer, but their bill today is $303. Monthly bill, this is, $303. Under alternative one, our current rate structure, let's don't make any material changes to the structure, it goes to $330, about a 10% increase. Under alternative two, it actually goes down $7. Okay? This is that conflict that I talked about between This is that conflict that I talked about between stability and conservation, right? And so this, this is a very different alternative. And based on some of the comments I've heard about encouraging conservation, even though we have less than five percent of our customers, less than one percent of our customers using twenty-five thousand gallons or more, there's a message that gets sent. So we wanted to show you these contrasting alternatives. So yeah, it's a, it's a decrease in the bill. Everybody else in the system's getting an increase, but this is a decrease for one percent or less than, less of your customers. And the benefit we derive on revenue stability is we're picking up about five percent more of our revenue between the base charge and tier one. So instead of generating about forty-seven, forty-eight percent of our revenue between the base charge and tier one, we're picking up fifty-two, fifty-three percent of our revenue. So it's about a four or five percent increase in our revenue stability measure, okay? Non-residential, we had a question about non-residential customers. And so we've selected two customers here, a two-inch metered customer and a four-inch metered customer, and you can see how their bills change from seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars today to nine hundred and twenty-seven or nine hundred and thirty-five under alternatives one and two. For that four-inch customer, a bill today of almost twenty-nine hundred dollars going to thirty-four hundred dollars or thirty-five hundred dollars by 2017, an increase of six or seven hundred dollars, okay?
Quick question on that, and it may just be a typo in the printing, but on the non-residential two-inch, it's accounting for twenty-four thousand gallons of water and a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of, of wastewater?
That value is incorrect, Andrew. Do you recall what that is? Okay. I'm going to say, no. For some reason, we selected, that value, if you'll notice, the dollar amounts are the same for those two customers. So it's, the hundred and twenty-five is probably wrong, but the dollars are wrong as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll fix that because for, for a customer only using twenty-four thousand gallons, the wastewater average winter should be a lot less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons.
And so going to the residential component here for just a minute, and, you know, understanding where my comments today are coming from, is just trying to, you know, this is all numbers and its formulas and, and looking at how things are done. And I'm not oblivious to the fact that we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for our infrastructure and our operations going forward. I'm just trying to understand where there's mandates and/or rules in how we assign our rate structures, where there's opportunities to make adjustments. And, you know, and realizing, we talk about an increase from seventy-six dollars for the residential to eighty-seven dollars, and for some people, ten dollars, no big deal. For some people in our community, that's an hour of work every month before taxes that's going to pay for that increase. And how many of those hours can keep getting eaten up? And so that's where some of my questions revolving around our other users and how we're coming to numbers, and then really, how we can set our rates so that we can address some of those issues. We've got a population where ten dollars is ten dollars, and another population, ten dollars is a lot of money.
And here in Prescott, you're not unlike other communities. And this issue that you raise, it's a great issue of affordability. It's one we're seeing around the country. I was in a city council meeting a week or two ago, looking at rate changes. It's a big issue. Communities deal with it in a number of different ways. We have cost of service principles, we have legal precedents that we generally have to follow when it comes to setting rates. Here at the local government level, the latitude you have is much broader than if we were before the Arizona Public Service Commission. That said, though, the idea of basing rates on a person's income wouldn't withstand legal challenge. And I know you're not suggesting that.
Right.
But, but we do have to be sensitive. And then this, in part, flies in the face of revenue stability, because the higher we make that base charge, the more difficult it is for the low-income customer. And low income doesn't always mean low volume. And that's the customer that has the greatest challenge with the base charge, is the low-volume customer. If I'm only using one thousand gallons, I'm paying a high base charge for water, I'm paying a high base charge for sewer, for wastewater, and that's a big part of my bill. At the other end of the spectrum, if I'm a large-volume water user, the base charge is background noise on my bill. But we do need to be aware of those customers that are having issues paying their bills. And I can't speak to the programs that may or may not be available here in Yavapai County or at the city, but a growing list of utilities are looking at ways that they can help participate in that. And whether it's through assistance, direct funding to social service agencies, county agencies, the Salvation Army, who can then help customers on your electric bill. Most of us have an option to check the box, and we can donate the pennies of our bill to a fund, we can donate dollars to a fund. So utilities around the country are looking at more and more options for addressing the issue of affordability, because you're absolutely right, Councilman. Ten dollars to this person is nothing, ten dollars to that person is a lot.
And so I, I think the one correlation, and a ding, the light bulb finally went off, is when we're talking about the value, the volume adjustment here, it really comes down to personal and individual responsibility for their use.
That's right.
If they can afford to use it. They can use it. If they can't, it's something that they need to be aware of.
Well said. I had a customer once tell me that, "Rick, I have insurance on my house. If it burns down, I'm covered. I've invested all this money in my landscape, and if it burns up, I'm not covered. So charge me what you want, but I'm going to water because that's, that's an investment for me, that's my hobby. Whatever it is, I've made a choice, and I'm going to pay whatever you charge me."
Okay. Now, that, that addresses my concern on the affordability a little bit more.
So I also wanted to show you, because the question came up about affordability, about economic development, and this chart is for a residential customer, and it shows where the city is today, our current value, water and wastewater. It shows where you would be under alternatives one and two. And every study we do, this is almost the first question we get, how do we compare to others? And because I have the microphone, I'm often then given the opportunity to get on my soapbox and talk about choices that businesses and residential customers make about where they want to live and what influences that. And I would argue that I'm going to look at my commute, the schools for my kids, those things, long before I look at my utility bill, so long as that utility bill is within a reasonable range. If here in Prescott, my utility bill was two or three hundred dollars, and I'm way off this chart, that might get my attention. And I make these same comments, I probably made them with, with council months ago, with regard to the development impact fees, that those, as long as you're within a reasonable range of your neighbors, it is not a, it is not a significant factor in where homes get built, where businesses locate. So these monthly bills that we're showing you here, I would argue, it's good information, but there are a lot of reasons why Cottonwood's a lot higher and Prescott Valley's a lot lower. They can be issues associated with their source of supply, their technology, their choices on how they fund their utilities.
Well, along that line, specifically Prescott Valley, almost all new infrastructure. They don't have the aging infrastructure challenges, and they funded most of their infrastructure through CFDs, not through the rates, correct?
That's true. They had private water companies that they acquired, but I think another significant factor that Craig has often reminded us of is your system and the complexity of how it operates. I'm not throwing blankets, but Prescott Valley, generally flat, Prescott is not. I don't think it's a lot more complicated than that. And Henry can jump in and tell me I'm all wet, but that's a big part of it.
Did you look at the ra, the rate structure, the tier structure beyond five thousand gallons for a comparison of these communities?
We did not. We certainly could.
I think that would be very interesting, because I lived in Flagstaff for twenty years, and I don't think I ever had a bill this low, ever.
And one of the reasons that we focused on five thousand gallons, because that's about your average customer. You're right, in other communities, water use can be vastly different, but to make it apples-to-apples, we wanted to stick with five. We chose not to, for example, look at twenty thousand gallons where we have that tier cutoff because we have so few customers there. But it might be beneficial, to your point, Councilwoman, to look at maybe ten thousand gallons. And bring that comparison back to council.
Yeah.
Quickly, septic hauler, I, I mentioned we, we would look at this. Our cost of service analysis basically indicated we were probably somewhere in the eighty or ninety dollars as opposed to a hundred. But costs are going up, and we rarely want to lower rates and have to turn around and raise them. So staff, we worked together to do a little bit of a survey and show you what others are charging, and that's here for your review. But at a hundred dollars, that is above our cost of service based on the test year that we looked at and the values that we used. And so we feel comfortable recommending that you continue and go forward with that rate.
What was our volume last year of septic, roughly? Do we know that?
Volume in terms of either flow or even dollars.
Yep. We have that data?
I don't have that data right here, right now.
That's fine. We will, we can provide it. Okay, thank you. Moving forward.
Treated effluent. This is always an interesting topic, because treated effluent is of lesser quality than potable water, treated water. And so there's a natural mindset that if that's what I'm taking, I should pay less. We have customers who have the opportunity, the ability to use treated effluent, and we have customers who can't. At my single-family residence, I can't use treated effluent. But we have golf courses, we have others that, that can, and so we should try to encourage that. So this is a summary of your current relationships, your current customers, and the rate that they are charged. And then over on the right-hand side, comments about how that rate can be changed per the contract. And to give some context, the second column from the left tells you the projected acre-feet of water sales, of effluent sales for the upcoming year. So you have some significant customers, Prescott Lakes, Antelope Hills, and the prices that we're charging them. Communities, the, the most common approach to charging for effluent is to base it on a percent of your treated water rate. And we've seen communities as low as twenty or thirty percent. Generally, communities are in the seventy, eighty percent range of what they charge. This is to recognize, one, that we want to try to encourage this. If we have the capacity to provide the treated effluent, we want to encourage it. Two, often when you look at the, the actual cost of serving customers, and this is not necessarily the case here, but your effluent customers are so few and far between, but you still have to lay that pipe out there. And so because of those low densities, the cost per customer can be unbelievably high. And we've done plenty of analyses where the cost to serve a customer is greater than the cost of treated water. And if we charge that, why would anybody sign up for that? But it's a benefit to our community, to our utility as a whole, if we can provide treated effluent to those customers and save our good water for those customers who don't have a choice. So that's why it still makes sense to, to sell it to those customers at something less than the treated water rate, okay? So with all that said, we're recommending that your treated effluent rate for these non-contract customers be at seventy percent of your treated water rate. And when we convert that into a price per acre foot, it comes out to be about eleven hundred dollars. And we suggest that we get to that price over a period of time. And to give you some context, we're showing you here the current price of some other, in some other communities, of their effluent rate, from a low at Cottonwood of three hundred and sixteen dollars an acre foot up to Flagstaff at almost eleven hundred. So we think this is consistent with industry practices. It moves you in the direction of recovering a greater dollar amount. And at eleven hundred dollars, we're absolutely recovering the cost of the infrastructure associated with getting that treated effluent out to those customers. It is covering that. So let me try to summarize if I could, and then I'm going to bring some questions to council. Again, we've talked about the system you have here, and it's not your run-of-the-mill water utility or wastewater utility, just because of the manner in which the city's developed, the elevations and so forth. Costs will be higher here than we see in other places. It's just that simple. Your enterprise fund, we need to look at these, at the water, at the wastewater utility as separate businesses, and they should recover in total the indicated cost of service. And we feel rather strongly that the customer classes should also recover their cost of service.
Question.
Yes.
Going back to page thirty-four where it says the current is five hundred, I mean, we're only selling five acre feet for five hundred bucks, so are you suggesting that we take Hanson, Prescott Lakes, Antelope Hills up to five hundred currently and then start increasing from there?
I, no, these customers have their contract terms, so we cannot take them to the five hundred. It would be on the other five acre feet, and then any other new customers that we might bring onto the system. That's where we would start them.
At the, Councilman, at the time, the contract comes up for renewal. That will be the time to have a discussion about pricing effluent. And, and there's no need to have that discussion today, but, but it's more than just picking a number.
Thank you.
And just be prepared that Howard Mechanic has identified this as an area of interest for him. So we're going to be getting quite a few questions from the public, I assume, about effluent rates and the questions that were just asked.
And the Prescott Lake contract comes up in February of sixteen, which is right around the corner. Craig had mentioned earlier that, you know, we have been increasing rates, particularly on the wastewater side, in anticipation of our needs. So we're continuing, this is a continuation of that philosophy, of that mindset, of that practice, that we have some significant needs on the wastewater side, and hence the nine percent increases proposed for the next two years, and then dropping off to more levelized, maybe more CPI-type increases. Our infrastructure here and across the country is in dire need of attention, and this is part of the financial plan that we've presented with you, presented to you tonight, to begin to be more proactive about this and get our arms around the, the specific needs here in Prescott. There's an awful lot of discussion at the federal level. I sit on an EPA advisory board, going to our meeting in two weeks in DC, about how EPA can do a better job of dealing with wastewater utilities and providing funding tools, management tools. But the federal government is not going to step in and deal with the problems at the local level, the problems that you're facing today. And we really can't even begin to think that that's going to happen. This is a local issue. The extent of the federal and state help will probably, probably venture no further than WIFA and the subsidized interest rates, the low-interest rates that they can provide us. We saw, I mentioned Lake Havasu earlier. Lake Havasu received some federal grant money, but the receive, the reason they received federal grant, grant money was because of the Colorado River and the impact that that contamination was having on the water quality downstream.
Right.
So it had much broader impacts. So unless our impacts here extend beyond our limits in a big way, it's not likely we're going to see any state or federal assistance in solving our problems. Again, the meeting I was in the other night, major capital improvement program, we showed it being addressed at ten years, and then the question was, "Well, then after ten years, we probably won't need rate increases. Maybe we can even have some rate decreases." And I've, Andrew and I have never been retained to do a rate decrease study. And this business with the capital needs that we have, that just won't happen. Your infrastructure will continue to deteriorate. It has a fixed life. And so the utility business, the capital-intensive nature of it, rate incre- it, rate increases will be with us forever. Now, maybe we can get on a pattern where it's an every-other-year rate increase, something like that, but rate increases are something that will be in our future for the foreseeable future. Here's the rate-setting process calendar. So you can see here today, October 7th, this workshop that we have. There are some meetings planned into the future, and you can just look down here and see the approval dates and new rates going into effect consistent with state statutes on January 1 of 2015. There's some public meetings on October 28th and November 6th where we'll be soliciting comments from customers, back to council for a public hearing on November 18th. We have received some great feedback today, and it's been a good exchange and a few requests for additional pieces of information. On the question of Alternatives 1 or 2, and I, you know, this is not a session where council gets to vote, we can't take formal action today, but I'm hearing that we have a leaning towards an alternative, Alternative 1, that continues with our conservation message, doesn't, even while increasing revenue stability, doesn't lower bills for high-volume users. I'm also hearing, or I haven't heard anything against moving towards cost of service and bringing that alignment amongst our classes together over a three-year period. And please, if I misstate anything, let me know, but this is really just sort of a straw man assessment I'm making. Yes, Councilman?
The, uh, the cleanup fund for the water, will that be a separate line similar to what we have for the dump, close your feet on the billing?
We'll have to. Well, um, maybe. What do you think, Mark? I mean...
We're getting desperately close to the end of our bill size. I mean, to do that, we may have to go to a two-page bill or to a front-and-back bill, similar to your APS bill when you start getting all these charges. We could also just include it as part of your base or your meter charge with a footnote that says this includes an alternative fee.
Yeah, and indicate what the fee is.
It's funny, because that utility, other than concerns about roads, one of my biggest conversations when I'm out in the public is the utility bill. So just so it's understandable to the consumer.
It is very complex, as you know, we administer utility billing with all 23,000 accounts, and we get a lot of calls, a lot of questions about all the different lines.
And my only question is on the calendar, or my only question that's left, is the December 2nd, you mentioned, you know, it's got the state statute in there, is that set in stone, or could that meeting be on the 9th as well? Because I believe we have a joint meeting on the 9th. Is that correct?
No, in December, the council schedule, the revised holiday month council schedule provides for council meetings on the 1st and 3rd Tuesdays.
So the 2nd and the 16th?
So the 2nd will be a combined workshop-voting meeting.
Okay, so then the corrected question would be, are we locked into the 2nd, or would the 16th be an option that we'd have to determine by the 14th?
Well, it is, it is at the, you know, it's the council's prerogative to take action or not take action. This is designed to lead to the January 1st, 2015 effective date. If the council took action after the 2nd of December, then the effective date of the rates would have to be later.
Okay, and the only reason I'm asking is, we're going to have the public hearing on the proposed rates on the 18th, which leaves us seven business days, if there's anything substantial that comes from that, around Thanksgiving, and my experience for the last two years is that it's really hard to get anything done the week of Thanksgiving, anywhere. And so if there's anything of value, we basically have three or four days to try and capture staff and get questions answered before we adopt something. It's my only comment, and we can talk more about it later.
Right, and I think the appropriate time to talk about it will be on next week's meeting, October 14th, where you will be presented, you know, in a voting session, the materials indicated up there, and if you, if the council would like to modify the schedule, then certainly you can do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, you know, the gentleman brought up the cost of laying the purple pipe and how it's pretty expensive to move that effluent around. Just thinking forward with our new wastewater treatment plant, we're gonna reproduce an A-plus effluent. When we do construction, like the realignment of Willow Creek Road, which is basically from the airport to the Parkway Junction, that almost gets us to Embry-Riddle, that almost gets us to Pioneer Park. Are we laying, when we do the utilities on this road project and we're putting stuff in there, is it a possibility of us to lay a purple line in that hole? And then in the future, we know we have that couple, few miles of pipe in the ground so that when we, we're basically could plumb towards a new market for our effluent? Because Embry-Riddle has huge grass fields, huge giant fields. Pioneer Park, we keep growing that with more ball fields, more park fields. Is there any way for us to think ahead and lay in the infrastructure to hook into it at a later time?
Well, unfortunately, during the peak time of the year, when Embry-Riddle, for example, would want treated effluent, you know, at a lower cost to use on athletic fields, we don't have the effluent quantity to give to them during the summertime. During the summertime, with what we are using in treated effluent for construction water, for Hanson, for the golf courses, there, we do not have a sufficient quantity of treated effluent to be able to deliver significant amounts to other customers.
I see.
We'll see you again.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We're outta here.